I call to order today's meeting of the Boston City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the rolls to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counsel Ray.
Yes.
Counsel Kalata Zapata, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Louie Jean, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Pepe, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber, and Counsel Worrell. Seven presidents.
Thank you. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. Now, it is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy Reverend Irene Monroe invited by Counsel Santana. Counsel Santana, if you can come up. I mean, after the invocation, we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Sorry. And good afternoon, everyone. Oh, okay. We can do better than that. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'm honored today to introduce Reverend Irene Monroe. Reverend, would you please come up and join us? Reverend Irene Monroe is a public theologian, ordained minister, syndicated columnist, and a nationally acclaimed activist. She co-hosts the podcast and Boston Public Radio segment, all revved up on GBH 89.7 FM. Reverend Monroe is also the Boston voice for Detour's African-American Heritage Trail. Reverend Monroe graduated from Moseley College and Union Theological Seminary at Columbia University and served as pastor at an African-American church in New Jersey before coming to Harvard Divinity School to earn her doctorate as a Ford Fellow. She was instrumental in a Union United Methodist Church, a predominantly African-American church in Boston's South End, becoming a reconciling congregation, the first in New England. She was also the children's minister at Old Cambridge Baptist Church in Cambridge. Reverend Monroe has taught at Harvard and over New and Theological Seminary, Episcopal Divinity School, and UNH, to name a few. Reverend Monroe is a founder and honored member of several national LGBTQ+ Black and religious organizations and has received numerous awards as an activist. Her papers are at the Slade Church, at a library at Radcliffe College Research Library on the history of women in America. As we approach National Coming Out Day this Friday and celebrate LGBTQ+ History Month in October, I wanted to invite Reverend Monroe to share her unique perspective as a Black member of the LGBTQ+ community. Her voice is crucial in highlighting the intersectionality of these identities, and she plans to address these themes in her remarks today. Thank you so much, Reverend Monroe, for being here with us today.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Come on now. I come out of Black church. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
It is an honor to be here today with you all. National Coming Out Day promotes a safer Boston for all the LGBTQ communities. It affirms our lives, our worth, and our dignity. National Coming Out Day challenges conventional ideas and fears by showing that the LGBTQ Boston community is very much a part of everyday life. It normalizes our existence and it ceases to reinforce the idea that a heteronormative view is normal and natural, that has long proved to be the basis of prejudice, discrimination, and hate. National Coming Out Day makes clear that sexuality is no way to organize our judgment about people and that no particular sexuality, gender identity, or expression should be considered the norm. National Coming Out Day stands as a beacon of support and acknowledgement for those who bravely share and bravely not only share, but authentically share who we are in this world. The day invites us to openly embrace our sexualities, our gender expressions, and our identities. Sharing our authentic selves with others, however, is not always safe or easy, and it is not a one-day event. But when possible, it can be an extraordinarily powerful key to breaking down the barriers we face as LGBTQ people. And these are some of the benefits of coming out. It makes it easier to develop a positive image. It frees us from the fear of being found out and living a double life. It allows us to be part of a community with others with whom we have something in common, and it allows us to be role models for others. However, there are risks in coming out and the ongoing challenges in the journey towards self-expression. These are just a few: being thrown out of our families, not being accepted in our religious communities, being seen as sick, immoral, or perverted, losing our jobs, having our professional credibility questioned and undermined. And we can never, never, never forget this because this is always ongoing, that we're always facing discrimination, harassment, abuse, and even sometimes physical violence. However, we as LGBTQ+ people have showcased what coming out of the proverbial closet means in terms of self-acceptance. We have racked up an impressive list of civil rights victories that have overturned discrimination laws in Massachusetts and by extension, the nation. Democracy can only begin to work when those relegated to the fringes of society can begin to sample what those in society take for granted as their inalienable right. Because Boston has many protections for us LGBTQ citizens, if we choose to come out, we can stay out. Many LGBTQ Americans reside in cities across this country where National Coming Out Day will not be acknowledged. I give thanks for a city like Boston that acknowledges its LGBTQ citizens because Boston encourages us to participate in the political process for our civil rights, letting us know that our lives matter. This coming election is consequential. We must go to the ballot box in November. Everyone's rights, everyone's rights are on the chopping block. We here in this chamber believe in a multicultural society and a participatory government. America stands at a crossroads, but Boston will make the right choice. Boston will meet the challenge because we're Boston Strong. And because we're Boston Strong when it comes to democracy and protecting all the great people of the city of Boston, Boston will fight until hell freezes over, and then Boston will fight on the ice, knowing that the power of the people is far greater than those lying people trying to take power. There are two types of leadership. There are those who are thermometers, who measure the temperature in a room. And then there are those who are thermostats, who change the temperature in the room. As Boston Strong, you here in this chamber are thermostats. You here are serving all the people of Boston, calling for a new way forward. And in calling for a new way forward, please remember to vote. Vice President Kamala Harris' campaign catchphrase is, "We're not going back." And as someone who has been out of the closet for decades, I ain't going back, and I'm not going back in it, and I can't fit in it. And I don't have to, really, because Boston celebrates National Coming Out Day. It acknowledges that we too, as LGBTQ citizens, are also part of Boston's illustrious history. Thank you for inviting me today.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend Monroe, for that invocation, and thank you, Counsel Santana. We are now on to presentations. Oh, yes. Mr. Clerk, could you please amend the attendance record to reflect that Counselors Kalata Zapata, Durkin, Pepe, Weber, and Worrell are now with us? Great. We are now on to two presentations. Today, we have two presentations, one from Counsel Fitzgerald honoring Ryan Woods and one for myself honoring Darren Howell. Counsel Fitzgerald, you now have the floor in five minutes.
Thank you, Counsel President. Ryan, you want to join me up here, my friend? Folks, today, I have the honor—Henry, come on up too. Henry co-sponsor with this later on in the agenda. You know, this job is fantastic in the ways that sometimes you get to have these moments where you get to present citations like this to a friend, and today is one of those days where Ryan Woods, our Commissioner of our Parks Department, lifelong resident of Dorchester, here with his beautiful family, his wife, and three children, two boys and a girl—great makeup, by the way, two boys and a girl. And, you know, earlier last year when I was running, I sat down with a former guy who ran for city council, and he showed me his pamphlet of all the things. He was in the 1970s he ran. Al Cardarelli was his name. Maybe somebody familiar, right? Ed knew. And he showed me the pamphlet of all the issues that he wanted to talk about. And unfortunately, a lot of them are the same ones today. But the last one on it was "Better Parks for Our City of Boston," right? And I said, "Al, I think we're actually doing all right with that one in the last 24 years." And I said 24 randomly, just because it brought us back. But then, when I got your stats today, Commissioner Woods has dedicated the last 24 years of his life working for the city of Boston and starting with the summer jobs program in the Parks Department. He then went on to be Director of Programming, Director of External Affairs. In 18, Commissioner Woods, you became the Deputy Commissioner, where you executed 721 park events, including the process for mobile vending, swan boats, and frog pond operations. And in 2019, under Mayor Walsh, Ryan, you became the Commissioner and have since developed an innovative virtual programming during the pandemic, invested into making all parks cleaner, safer, and more accessible, and led the roadmap and funding for the Franklin Park Master Plan. So I think there's no coincidence when we look back and we see that our parks have been better in the last 24 years. And sort of the man that has always been there steadfast in those 24 years is Ryan Woods. And, you know, therefore, you know, I'll actually—I'll let Henry say a couple of words first, and then we'll turn it over to you. But I just wanted to say thank you so much and continued luck with your family in the next chapter. The city of Boston is a more beautiful, thriving, and open space because of you. And so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and congratulations, Commissioner. I'll keep this—my remarks short, and, you know, I won't read. But, you know, I had the opportunity to work alongside Commissioner Woods as the former Director of Civic Organizing for the City of Boston. And we did a lot of cleanups. We did—a lot of cleanups across the city. And part of those cleanups happened in parks. So I got to work very closely with Commissioner Woods and his team. And his passion to the city, to our parks, to our youth, to our residents and families who use and utilize these parks is unmatched. And I'm just very honored that I got to work with you and got to work with you in this role. And you as an incredible public servant in, you know, the city of Boston and the city council thanks you for your service. Thank you so much, Commissioner.
So, Commissioner Woods, therefore be it resolved that the members of the Boston City Council do hereby extend their gratitude to Commissioner Woods and declare October 18th, 2024, your final day, Ryan Woods Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you very much. It's been a long journey from learning how to teach kids how to play baseball in our parks when I was 16 years old and working my way through up. I'll always bleed green. I'm not going far. I'm going to meet Boston, the Greater Boston Convention and Visitors Bureau, to make Boston a year-round city and try to activate our public spaces to bring more people into our hotels and into our city and to get residents to come out. So I'm keeping the tradition. I'm keeping with trying to activate our spaces. It's something I've loved, and thank you for the support. I think parks have come a long way. When we look, our capital budgets in 2013 were $11.8 million, and this past year, we had $72 million in capital funding coming in. And we have been able to get more FTEs every year, and it's because of the support of the council and all of our partnerships and all the hard-working men and women of the Boston Parks Department. So thank you. I won't be going far. Like I said, I will still be around. I'll still answer questions. I'm coming back to help run the tree lighting on December 5th on Boston Common, so I haven't been able to give it up yet. But thank you for all the support, and again, you all have my number, and I will always answer. So thank you.
If all my colleagues could please join for a photo? And that with family?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, please. Lauren, family, mom, everyone come down for the picture as well.
My mother, Lucy, my assistant.
Lucy, yep. Lucy, you too.
I do like this mic a lot better.
They're keeping you for the daylight.
I know. Thank you.
Your family, yeah.
Oh, yeah, family, okay.
Mom, Lauren.
No, 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 no. Lauren, Lauren, you're up here. Come on. Yep, mom, mom, come here. You come here, too. Who? Me?
Lucy.
Lucy. We do this? Yeah.
Ready? One, two.
Ready? One, two. Can I get a little closer? Ready?
Same here. Congratulations again. So I dropped it. Now I fall like a fish out of water. You know what I mean? Congratulations, Lauren. Congrats, Lauren. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations again, Commissioner Woods. We are going to miss you, but your cellphone will still be ringing, so. This is for... Next, I have the honor of presenting a resolution to someone who we all know and love here in the city of Boston, Darren Howell. 20 years ago, Darren was walking out of the House of Corrections and committed to being a role model in community and an upstanding member here in the city of Boston. And you've done that many, many, many times over. He is no stranger to this chambers, having been the constituent director for the late Chuck Turner. And we know as city counselors how important it is to have people who are really centered in the work of responding, helping us to respond to our constituents, and Darren did just that. We know him as an organizer with 1199. And all of the people we helped to empower as being part of a union, finding their collective voice: nursing assistants, PCAs, all around the city of Boston. And he didn't stop. His organizing work wasn't just limited to the nine-to-five. It was the five-to-nine, too, whether it was Toys for Tots or the work that you do with Drive Boston. Everyone begging you to do Toys for Tots again this year because they know how dedicated you are, Darren. And come on up here, how dedicated you are not only to the city of Boston, not only to working people and building working power, but really how committed you've been to the city where you were born and raised. You can come on up here. Whether it's speaking to you at a union rally or whether at a community event at K's Oasis, you have really been centered in the work. And I just want to, you know, acknowledge all you've done. We know that you've left 1199 now, and you are the organizing director for the AFL-CIO. But you have just shown what it means when we invest in people, when we don't give up on our Black men and boys here in the city of Boston. And it's been a pleasure to be doing this work alongside you, whether in your capacity, again, as a community member, as a union leader, or as a beloved father to our beloved Jason in the Office of Black Male Advancement. We honor you and we thank you for all that you do in our city. It's also empowering your story because we shouldn't be giving up on anybody, regardless if they're walking out of school, or walking out of jail, or working out of prison. Every person has value, and everyone has something to contribute to our city. I wasn't able, last minute, to make it to your 20-year bash that you had at Lonon D., but know that I was with you in spirit, and so many of us here on the council are grateful every day for the work that you do. And so I know you got a lot of fancy resolutions honoring this 20-year anniversary. But I'd just like to read this resolution on behalf of the Boston City Council that we be resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Darren Howell in recognition of your 20 years commemorating your transformation, where you've come from and where you are now. You are a vital member of the Boston community, and we congratulate you on this milestone.
Thank you, Madam President. This is definitely an honor. I kind of wrote something down because I've been busy the last few days. But I first want to extend my sincere thanks to you, Madam President, Lucy Louie Jean, and all the members of the Boston City Council for this incredible honor. I am truly humbled to be recognized for my contribution to the field of public service, a journey that has been both challenging and rewarding. Just this morning, I reached out to Human Resources and was reminded that my journey began exactly 18 years ago this week, on October 7th, 2006, when the late Honorable Chuck Turner hired me to be his Director of Constituent Services. Having a criminal record, I never imagined or envisioned standing here today in this capacity. My past is sincerely a part of my journey, but it doesn't define who I am or what I've been able to work and accomplish. Through hard work, resilience, and the unwavering support of those who believe in me, I've been able to dedicate my life to serving our community and advocating for justice, equality, and opportunity. This recognition is not just for me, but for everyone who has faced obstacles, made mistakes, and still found a way to make a positive difference in the world. It's a testament to the belief that we can all contribute meaningfully, no matter our past. I'm grateful for my friends, my families, colleagues, members of the community, and all of you who have supported me along the way. Thank you again for this honor, and I remain committed to this work in the cause of public service. Thank you.
If my colleagues could please join me for a photo?
And can my friends at AFL join me for a photo? Kind of put you on the spot.
And you want—
Yeah, Jason.
Jason. Someone else can take the video, hold it in, or so, yeah. Can take the recording.
Appreciate you. Wow, always cheers. Thank you.
Come on up. Come on up. All right. Sun, this side. Go, come on. Go over there. Okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right smile. Check you out.
All right, you gotta hold this up. Is this spitters? Yeah, is this spitters? Thank you. We are now—and congratulations again to Darren Howell for all you've contributed in your story of success, and again to Commissioner Woods for all you've given the city. It was an honor to recognize the both of you. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of October 2nd, 2024. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm objecting because I didn't receive a response, an official response on my 17F as it related to the BHA elevator-related issue. I think it's an important issue impacting BHA residents across the city, and I want to—I want to get more information on the current status of BHA elevators throughout the system. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Your objection is noted. We are now on to communications from our Honor the Mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1506?
Docket Number 1506, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1 million from the United States Department of the Interior under the Land and Water Conservation Fund to be administered by the Boston Parks and Recreation Department for the purpose of making capital improvements to the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway in East Boston. The grant will fund improvements to the Greenway, including newly paved pathways, enhanced entrances, new site furnishings, and drainage improvements to address chronic site flooding.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Kalata Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. As the Chair of this committee, I am respectfully asking that my colleagues join me in voting to suspend and pass this important docket that will provide capital improvements to the Mary Ellen Welch Greenway. This money will help beautify and fortify a vulnerable area in the Greenway and make resilient an important stretch that will ultimately act as a stopgap against coastal flooding. So there's a lot of urgency around this docket. And I also just want to say that I'm very lucky to have known Mary Ellen Welch and consider her a mentor. And we are the reason why, instead of having acres of park and flies in the middle of East Boston, we now have this beautiful green ribbon that runs through Eastie. And so I'm really grateful to her and everything that she's done for the community. And I know that she would honestly be upset with the way in which things are on the Greenway and some of the conditions. So this money will help to fix that. And so respectfully, again, I ask my colleagues in her memory to join me in suspending and passing. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Kalata Zapata seeks suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 1506. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This docket is passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1507 and 1508?
Docket Number 1507, message in order requesting and recommending that the city hold in-person early voting for both the September 9th, 2025 preliminary municipal election, presuming this body acts fairly on my separate submission related to the date of the preliminary and the November 4th, 2025 municipal election. I make this request in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter 54, Section 25B, C1, upon the request of the registrars of the city of Boston. That statute provides a local option to allow for in-person early voting for any preliminary or municipal election. Docket Number 1508, message in order at the recommendation—
Docket number 1130, order for a hearing to implement community safe rodent birth control to protect Boston families, companion animals, and wildlife.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Services and Innovation Technology, Counsel Peppin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday's hearing was incredible, and I encourage folks to watch the panelist's presentation. In particular, I want to thank the experts at the Massachusetts Audubon, the MSPCA, and the New England Wildlife Center, also the Animal Rescue League, Harvard Law, Boston Animal Control, and the nonprofit Wisdom Good Works. They showed us clear compelling evidence that poisons are gruesomely killing the birds who eat rodents, as well as our families' dogs and cats. I'm also extremely grateful to the Boston residents who took the initiative to build their own program and who have proven that Good Bites Rodent Birth Control reduces rodent population by 50 to 60%. We thanked the administration for joining as well. They committed to ending the use of one type of these poisons and acknowledged that the Boston program was successful. Unfortunately, if the city continues poisoning sewer rats, we don't stay in the sewer, we don't, who don't stay in the sewers, it will still kill off birds and pets. Lethal strategies only reduce rodent population for about four months before total rebound. They often make rodents more susceptible to spreading diseases as well, and trash containerization is not enough because rodents can chew through anything unless it is literally made of steel. Dozens of municipalities, including Newton and Arlington, have filed home rule petitions to allow them to restrict the commercial use of these poisons. I welcome my colleagues to partner with me on future conversations and reallocate funding in our rodent operations to expand this successful program. At this time, I recommend that this hearing order remains in committee.
Thank you, Counsel Peppin, and I'm glad to co-sponsor this with you and the talk about the pilot that we're doing in Jamaica Plain, and look forward to seeing the work that we'll continue to do as a city on this. Docket number 1130 will remain, oh, Counsel Flynn, you have the floor?
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Peppin, for this hearing. I had the opportunity to work on this issue for about seven years, and this is a real quality-of-life issue, public safety, public health issue. We don't have certified pest control specialists that work on the weekends from Friday afternoon till Monday morning, but we also have to do more work on a public education awareness campaign, educating people on how to take out their garbage, the proper way to take out your garbage has a big impact as well. Composting needs to be expanded. Other recommendations I made to the city were included, with the exception of the ratza, which hopefully we'll take a vote on it at some time. But thank you, Counsel Peppin, for an informative hearing.
Thank you. We are now on to, oh, docket number 1130 will remain in committee. We are now on to docket number 1385. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1385?
You want me to read?
It's just 1385.
Docket number 1385, message in order for your approval, an order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $7 million in the form of a grant awarded by the United States Department of the Treasury to be administered by the city's Chief Financial Officer, Collective Treasurer. This grant payment is made from the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery fund in the Treasury of the United States, established by Section 9901 of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Boston's COVID-19 Recovery, Counsel Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. On October 7th, the Boston COVID-19 Recovery Committee heard docket 1385, which seeks your approval for the city of Boston to accept $7 million in ARPA funding. I was joined by my colleagues, Council President Rusi Louis-Jean, Counselors Ed Flynn, Aaron Murphy, Henry Santana, Elizabeth Braden, Ben Weber, Enrique Peppin, Gabriela Coletta Zapata, Brian Worrell, and John Fitzgerald. I'm grateful for my colleagues' attendance. As we heard, this would fund $3 million for the Acquisition Opportunity Program to prevent displacement by funding the purchase of market-rate rental buildings, converting them into permanent affordable housing. $3 million for the First-Time Home Buyers Program to provide financial assistance to low-to-moderate-income families in purchasing homes, with a focus on the Boston Housing Authority residents. $1 million for the space program, aimed at supporting small business affected by the pandemic by funding storefront openings, particularly for women and, and minority-owned businesses. This funding reflects the city's commitment to equitable recovery by listening to the community's needs. The city also really took into account the conversations that took place during the budget process, and I believe that this funding is aligned with the city council's priorities. We were joined by members of the administration, and they helped provide additional insight into the $7 million tranche, as well as the status of other ARPA funds in their respective programs. We heard from at least one business that is a finalist of the space grants, which will not be funded unless we move this order by the end of October. The members that we heard from were Ashley Graffensberger, the Chief Financial Officer, Kenzie Gock, Administrator, Boston Housing Authority, Rick Wilson, Director of Administration and Finance, Mayor's Office of Housing, and Shagon Idow, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. Chief Graffensberger provided an update that the $119 million is still left to be obligated by the federal deadline in December 2024. We will work to host future working sessions in my committee and will continue to ask for timely updates from the administration to make sure Boston obligates all funds that were provided to the city from the ARPA program before the federal deadlines. As my colleagues and I urged at the hearing, we need to make sure every bit of federal funding is utilized. But we also need to move forward with the $7 million to keep pushing as we get as much obligated as quickly as we can. I recommend this matter should pass today, and I know we'll continue to have conversations, and I've committed to at least one working session where we can hear, especially after the October 31st deadline, the federal filing deadline, where we can hear from the administration on where they are. And I'm happy to, any of my colleagues that have questions about funding in their communities or questions about money that is not yet obligated, especially the $119 million, please send them to me, and we will create conversations and spaces for that to happen. But as the Chair of the COVID-19 Recovery Committee, I move that this ought to pass.
Thank you, Counsel Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair. I had an appointment with my daughter yesterday, so I could not be here to take part in the discussion. And had I been here, I guess one of the first questions that I would ask, because I'm always all about the process, so just, it would just be helpful to understand how we ended up here so quickly. After the first hearing we had, like, not even a week later, we had a press conference announcing all of the investments that the city council was on board with, and I just felt like there was a, something, I must have missed a beat, or I must have missed something. But it seemed like there was already a press conference, a celebration around the allocation of these dollars. At least that's what it appeared like to me. But I just heard you say that we are going to have an opportunity to have a working session. So is it a done deal, or is there an opportunity for us to actually have a voice? Just because, and you're just saying that you are hoping that this ought to pass, so I'm a little bit confused. So it would just be helpful to know if you're at, if you are now going to, I guess, seal the deal today, after the public announcement was already made on the news that we were, like, celebrating the allocations before we took a vote. So we didn't take the vote, but we celebrated the win. But now we're going to actually formalize the, the vote and the win, just so that-
If you'd like me, but if you-
And you don't need to answer because you can do whatever you want, but for me, it's just important to understand the process, because then I have to go back to my constituents and help them understand the dynamics that play out in this council.
Counselor, through the Chair, Counsel Durkin, if you'd like to respond, you may. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel Mahia. What I'm recommending today is moving on the $7 million that we know is left and is obligated. What we heard during the hearing was that there's $119 million also that is not obligated, but that the city has plans for. So the working session would be really to discuss continuing to put the pressure on the administration to make sure that not a single dollar is wasted in this process. So what I'm looking to move forward on today is the $3 million for the AOP, the $3 million for the first-time home buyers, and $1 million for the space program. But we, the city's work on ARPA is not done until just, or at least, the city's work on ARPA is not done until December 2024, the end of, the end of the year, where every single dollar we're looking to get obligated. So what I'm providing as the Chair of this committee is an opportunity for there to be further conversations about the $119 million that is yet to be obligated, but is already spoken for. And if the city does need to come back with future authorizations, I, we, I just urge my colleagues to move quickly on the $7 million, because what we're looking to do is to get this money obligated and get this money spent. We don't want to waste a single dollar of COVID-19 recovery dollars. But I, I'm committed to more conversation about how we can keep up the pressure and make sure that we don't waste any federal resources. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be voting no on this docket for several reasons. I don't feel like there was a transparent process in residents, and city council has had an opportunity to learn about the program. I'm still trying to get information on who the recipients are for the space program, who received awards, for how much, their location, the address. That hasn't been made public to me. Counsel Mahia mentioned that there was a press conference announcing the support from the city council before we had, we even had the formal vote. So I couldn't be part of something that we don't have the information on. This is taxpayer money. Yes, it's federal tax, taxpayer money, but we need to make sure it's spent appropriately. I think we, I think the goal for the city right now is to rush and get this out of here by the deadline, December 31st. I'm not concerned with the deadline. I'm more concerned about spending the money appropriately. This is taxpayer money. There's no such thing as free money. I'm voting no again, voting no on this proposal.
Thank you. And I'd just like to just say for the record that I am going to be enthusiastically voting yes on this docket. It's $7 million, and I do believe that, you know, how this council has worked alongside the mayor on ARPA funds has been really encouraging. We put, my first term two years ago, we put $27 million into the Acquisition Opportunity Program that's going to prevent displacement in a number of our neighborhoods. It is harder to build a unit of affordable housing. The best thing to do is to preserve it. That's why the more money that we can put into the Acquisition Opportunity Program, the better it is for the entire city. I have residents calling me from out of Pan, asking me to call their landlord because they're facing displacement, if a person who buys their building buys it on the speculative market. And so I just want to say that I will be voting in favor of this. We also heard from Rosy Bound Books at the hearing on Monday, a black bookstore owner in Rosendale who needs this space grant, and a lot of our black and brown residents around the city who have used and make use of this space grant. It is critically important. $7 million in the grand scheme of things is not a ton of money, but for our small businesses, for our residents facing displacement under AOP, AOP would be a good mechanism to help them. For people who want to make homeownership a reality, and we're talking about the Section 8 program that Counsel Worrell and so many others here on the council have championed, I can think of very few better uses than supporting our small and local businesses and supporting our residents, especially our black and brown residents via AOP, being able to be first-time home buyers. And they all reflect what we worked on here on the council during ARPA, where we, as one of the few cities around the country, put more than half of our investment into housing because we know that that's what an issue that matters most to our residents. So I will be voting yes, and thank you, Counsel Durkin, for offering. I think there is more work for us to be doing on the money that hasn't yet been obligated to make sure, to see, make sure that the council voice, as we voted on, when we voted on ARPA two years ago, continues to be reflected in how that money is committed, to see if there are ways for us to elevate our needs, either both through ARPA and through budget. So thank you, Counsel Durkin. I will be voting in favor. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for holding the hearing. There were many questions, so if I could ask through the Chair to Counsel Durkin, did you say that the hard deadline is the end of this month to allocate the $7 million? I know we have till the end of the year to spend all of it.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin, if you'd like to respond.
So the third round of the space grant program, they were told that they would, they would be told if, if they applied, that they would be told by the end of the month. So yes, round three of the space grant is in peril if we don't get this done.
Which I'm very supportive of.
Sorry, if you could just let me finish.
Absolutely.
There, we don't have a meeting for the next two weeks, so it actually is very important that we move on this today. There are folks who are waiting to know if they got the space grant, and so I'm, we need to move on that today. I did want to just confirm for Counsel Flynn that my team sent you during the hearing the list of D2 restaurants and businesses that had gotten access to space grant funding, and your team confirmed that during the hearing. So I, my team has been doing everything we can to get back to each individual counselor about any questions, so, so maybe I can forward you that, Counsel Flynn.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes-
Can I still?
Oh, would you like to continue through the Chair? You may respond.
Yes, but my question is-
Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
We do have a meeting on the 30th, because there were several questions that were asked that we haven't gotten back, and I do want to go on the record, I'm very excited about the expansion of the space grant. Have, look, have the same number of people calling, hoping that they'll get this round. Was hoping that this $7 million, though, could have been broken down into $1 million, and we could have voted separately on the space grant alone, because a lot of the questions that are still outstanding are on the first two. I noticed how they, at the hearing, broke it into three different breakdowns. So through the Chair, if there's a way for us to just vote on the space grant or wait until the 30th, because there would be, but that would be cutting it close, and I agree, but I don't want to stop it, knowing that that million is attached to a lot of questions I have for the other $6 million.
Counsel Murphy, you're done with your question. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
The theory here with ARPA funding was to fund, to fund programs that we know work and to top up programs that we know are effective. The goal really is not to create any new programs. So out of the, out of our options for how this money could be spent, I wholly stand behind this $7 million, and I am, as the committee chair, am pushing for this to pass today. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Brayden. Counsel Brayden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I will be supporting this grant. As the Chair of the Housing Committee, I think the AOP money and the money for, to support BHA residents who are within striking distance of being able to afford their own home because they've increased their income. I think both of these, both of these grants are really critically important. As the Chair has already mentioned, these are programs that are already proven to be successful. The AOP program- Because a lot of the questions that are still outstanding are on the first two. I noticed how they, at the hearing, broke it into three different breakdowns. So through the chair, if there's a way for us to just vote on the space grant or wait until the 30th, because there would be, but that would be cutting it close, and I agree. But I don't want to stop it, knowing that that million is attached to a lot of questions I have for the other $6 million.
Counselor Murphy, you're done with your question. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
The theory here with ARPA funding was to fund, to fund programs that we know work and to top up programs that we know are effective. The goal really is not to create any new programs. So out of the, out of our options for how this money could be spent, I wholly stand behind this $7 million. And I am, as the committee chair, am pushing for this to pass today. Thank you.
The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I will be supporting this grant. As the chair of the Housing Committee, I think the AOP money and the money for, to support BHA residents who are within striking distance of being able to afford their own home because they've increased their income. I think both of these, both of these grants are really critically important. As the chair has already mentioned, these are programs that are already proven to be successful. The AOP program in particular is incredibly successful in removing housing, affordable housing, or from the speculative market so that it will be able to be, provide stable housing in perpetuity going forward. So I have absolutely no hesitation in voting for all of these. The, I think it's really critical because the ARPA money is running out, and we have failed so far to pass the transfer fee at the State House. So even though this is a modest amount of money, like $3 million doesn't seem like a lot, it will actually help us to take some more housing off the speculative market and keep it, keep it affordable for our residents in Boston. So I have absolutely no hesitation in supporting these grants, and I urge my colleagues to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Braden. Couldn't agree more. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I will, I will be voting in support of this, of these three grants. As someone who grew up in Boston Public Housing Authority and getting to see and speak to residents across the city about how they've utilized the first time home buyer, home buyer payment support, and to see people and families go from Boston Public Housing to become homeowners. That's a story that we need to be able to invest in. These are the stories that we want to see across the city. Counselor Braden just mentioned the AOP, and then, you know, I really want to support our small businesses as well. So I will be enthusiastically supporting these three grants. And I just want to thank the chair of the committee for hosting the hearing and for being so responsible, responsive to our office with, with any questions that we've had. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Pepe. Counsel Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also will be voting in support of these, of the acquisitions of this money, just because I think it'll be irresponsible if we don't. Congresswoman Presley, at the federal government, said that the space program is, should be nationally recognized as one of the best programs created using COVID ARPA money. And that is what the Small Business Department has done. And you already mentioned this, Council President, but there's a bookstore in Rosendale that its success cannot continue if these, if that $1 million of the $7 million is not passed. And not only that, I have met a handful of residents that have been able to purchase a home in High Park in Mattapan that went from BHA units to be able to purchase a home because of those ARPA grants. So for me, this is personal. Because I know that the lives of the district-wide residents are impacted by this, and that's why I will be voting in support of it. And I urge my colleagues to please support this today, and not delay it any further. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Pepe. The chair recognizes Counsel Fitzgerald. Counsel Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
I believe Counsel Mejia
You, you haven't spoken yet, and so I give it to you.
Well, hey, I'm not going to deny that. Thank you, Council President. So look, I'm not, I'm not against the, this is housing and small business, something that the money should absolutely be going towards. I just wanted to talk about the process when, because when we were invited to the backyard to sort of announce this, I was unaware that this was money that had not yet come before us for a vote. So I'm here more to just sort of talk about the processes in which this was rolled out because there, you know, you invite us to, we're invited to the event, we speak at the event, and then two weeks later, no matter, I am for this, but what if I, you know, what if I had learned something in between where I wasn't, but oh no, I already went out there and spoke at the event in support, so you're kind of painting it to a corner. So it was more the way I felt that it was communicated to us a little bit. But again, support of the money and what it goes to, absolutely. But just wanted to raise that as, I think that's some of the concern from other folks here as well, of sort of the way it was communicated to us in that event as to the vote happening after the announcement.
Okay. Thank, I, I understand your position. To me, it was clearly communicated, and so I understood it. But I understand if others
It's, I think there's different communication with different people on the council that occurs.
Okay, thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Yes. Thank you, Madam President. And what I realize is that I was the official translator for my community when I was growing up, so I had to help people understand what was being said. And I feel like in many ways, in my little time here on the council, I've become the official translator for the, the city so that they understand the back and forth that happens here in this chamber. And so I just want to note for the record, right? Because when I was, when I first came into office, to Counsel Pepe's point, I was one of the loudest mouths advocating for funding to support commercial vacancies and to support small businesses so that they can have access to those dollars. So I have been leading on that front. So for the record, for those who are tuning in, trust that I will be always fighting for those dollars for you to continue to expand the space program. The other piece in terms of housing, again, I'm going back to the process. I think that if I don't stand up and call things out when things are always happening to us without us, regardless of how you get the information, the bottom line is, is that we're going to have to do better as a body in how we make decisions. Because here we are, one hearing later, a press conference announcement, bringing this right back into the chamber and asking us to go for a vote. And I think that the process is flawed. And it's, and it is. And it's not just this particular committee. It's everything that comes through this council is beginning to feel like conversations are had with some, and not all. And I'm okay with it because I have always been an outsider, and I will always continue to be. I feel better that way. But I just think that we need to really start recognizing, right? That when people stand up to speak on behalf of the people that put you in this office, it's not about you being difficult, or being aggressive, or even being a bully. It is about you utilizing your platform and your voice to speak truth to power, right? And so we can continue to move in the way that we've been moving and bringing things to the council and just passing things along and voting yea or nay, however we feel the wind blows, or we can start really doing our jobs. And that is making sure that when it comes to $7 million or $2 million, or whatever million, that we really do our due diligence in making sure that voice is heard and that a platform is created for people to be heard. That's all I ask. Out of respect for the process, all I ask is for us to really start paying attention to what is happening and how we are behaving as a body every single time we've been asked to take a vote. And I think that for me, this is the only time, usually on Wednesdays, because we're lucky if we even have hearings. On Wednesdays is really the only time that I have to be fully expressed. Because the things that we deeply care about sometimes don't even get heard. And when you are in a hearing, you get censored. You do. And we have to start figuring out how we function as a body. Because having a hearing and then a press conference, celebrating a win that not everybody was signed up for feels like it is a reoccurring pattern here on the council. And I just want to call it like I see it.
Thank you. I just do want to clarify that on Monday, there was a hearing on this, and there was public testimony, and there was an opportunity for counselors to voice or talk to the chair about what they disagreed on, or if they wanted to see a different iteration. There was that opportunity. And the counselor, again, this is $7 million in the overall ARPA package, there is more work that we can do here through working sessions. But I just do want to state, and I actually have been feeling that this council has been doing a pretty good job, the number of hearings that we've been having, the quality of the hearings, the public testimony that has been showing up. So I understand and I hear that maybe people aren't communicated to in the same way, or they feel a certain way. But I do think that there has been opportunity here outside of this Wednesday meeting, all of the time, to attend hearings on grants, to attend hearings on whatever it is the issue is, and to, and to voice your opinion here. This is not the only opportunity. There's also, while there are hearings and working sessions, we are also people who can also just talk to each other, right? We are able to talk to each other. We recommend that doors stay open, try to have both of my doors open so that if there's an issue, and if you'd like to talk more, you can do that with the chair of a committee, and you can have those conversations. So just wanted to put that out there. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. Just for the record, I, no, there was a press conference announcing this. I, I wasn't invited to that press conference. I didn't know about it until after the fact, so I had to play a catch-up to try to learn more about the, the information. When I come to this Wednesday meeting, I want to make sure that I am fully knowledgeable about how taxpayer money is being spent. I can't vote yes on a, on a docket when I don't have the exact information in front of me. I can't be a rubber stamp for anybody. That's one of the reasons I'm voting no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And I can appreciate that people are communicated to differently, but I do want to go on the record that I was not communicated at all, that nobody called, texted, or invited me to that press conference. I didn't even know Counsel Fitzgerald was in a backyard. So I only saw people's social media posts, seeing that most of our colleagues were there, and found out that I was never included in that. So that is an example of not just being treated differently, being completely ignored. And then how, and questions were asked, which I appreciate, but like I said earlier, the questions were still waiting for it to come back. I was at that hearing, and I did ask some questions, so I'm still waiting for those answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Murphy. And if the question is, again, that my understanding was that everyone was called, and, and, you know, I did not do any of the calling. If it's a communication with IGR to make sure that everyone gets a phone call, whether the person decides to answer the phone call or not, I will ensure that IGR is at least calling people. And so if it's the mayor's office, we need to work on their communications so at least you are getting a phone call, so that you are where I was understanding, the understanding and under the impression that everyone received a phone call. Perhaps that did not happen. I will work to make sure of that, to improve those communications. The chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Well, it does sound like the folks that weren't invited wouldn't have been celebrating these three programs. No, because today, that is who is speaking against these three incredible programs. So I am pushing for this to pass today, and there have been multiple misrepresentations about the process. So let's be clear, I proactively filed something about ARPA money. We had a hearing on that. The mayor filed an order. We had a hearing on that. We've had two conversations. And I've heard from many of my colleagues, I can look around this room. They've asked me about the ARPA money. We've been in communication as the chair of that committee. So I'm taking an issue with the question of process here because I've actually gone above and beyond what was needed to try to communicate with my colleagues about this. And it, we had a hearing, and when I looked around for a second round of questions, nobody was there for a second round of questions. So I'm actually
I asked the second round
Yeah, you did, actually. But yes. But I think the idea that like this is so controversial when people couldn't even stay for the second round of questions. I've been to controversial hearings where there are second and third round questions. So let me just be very clear. These three programs are incredibly effective, and I am taking issue with the question of process. And I'm taking issue with no vote on three things that are essential to Boston residents. These are incredible programs that we know work. A tranche of money's already been spent on them. And I am passing, I am again, as the chair of this committee, saying it ought to pass. And my phone has not been ringing with the voices that are, that are piping up today. Have you called me about this money? No. And the questions that you've asked at the hearing were answered. So I just, I'm taking issue with this whole thing, and I, it's, it's really, like, I see people working together. I see this council as extremely effective. And I know why it's not. The, the places where we aren't effective, it's very clear where it's coming from. So I'm pushing for this to pass today.
Thank you. Counsel Durkin, the chair of the committee on Boston's COVID-19 recovery seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1385. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1385. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia. Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy. Counsel Murphy, no. Counsel Pepe.
Yes.
Counsel Pepe, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worrell.
Yes.
Counsel Worrell, yes. Docket number 1385 has received 10 votes in the affirmative and 2 in the negative.
Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1385 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read dockets numbers 0911, 1166, 1168, 1170, 1175, 1177, 1286, and 1432? Thank, take a sip of water, Mr. Clerk, before you start, because I know it's going to be a lot of reading. Thank you, Mr. Clerk, for, for doing that. So would you please read those dockets into the record?
Docket number 0911, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '24 earmark for fair, fair amount housing development awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the support of police overtime for visible patrols in the fair amount development. Docket number 1166, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $4,125,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '25 Public Safety Entering Point Support and Incentive Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund costs associated with providing enhanced 911 services. Docket number 1168, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $850,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '24 Boston Regional Intelligence Center earmark awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund upgrading, expanding, and integrating technology and protocols related to anti-terrorism, anti-crime, anti-gang, and emergency response. Docket number 1170, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $445,865.77 in the form of a grant for fiscal year '25 State 911 Training Grant awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the training and certification of enhanced 911 telecommunications staff. Docket number 1175, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $87,427 in the form of a grant for the United States Attorney's Project Safe Neighborhood Initiative Grant awarded by the United State, United State Attorney's Office passed through the Mass Executive Office of Public Safety and Security to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund the purchase of needed equipment, software, and other technology items considered vital for preventing or reducing violent crime. Docket number 1177, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $10,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '23 National Violent Death Reporting System awarded by the Mass Department of Public Health to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund data collection by the Bureau Investigative Services and the Drug Control Unit. Docket number 1286, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $11,200 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative awarded by the Mass Executive Office of Health and Human Services to be administered by the Boston Police Department. The grant will fund the support enrollment in the Certificate of Intensive Training and Motivational Interviewing for the SSYI Boston Case Management Team. Docket number 1432, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $175,000 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year '24 Police Reform Equitable Justice Grant Program awarded by the Target Corporation to be administered by the Police Department. The grant will fund the Youth and Police Initiative, which provides police with the skills and tools necessary to understand and deal with troubled youth and gives troubled youth new ways to understand, perceive, and deal with police authority.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counsel Santana, the chair of the committee on public safety, on criminal justice and public safety. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for reading all of those. I will say, I messed about, I messed up about 12 times when I tried to do that during the hearing, so I appreciate you. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on Tuesday, October 8th, 2024, to discuss eight public safety grants. October 8, 2024, to discuss eight public safety grants. These matters were all sponsored by Mayor Michelle Wu, and included dockets number 0911, which was referred to the committee on June 5, dockets number 1166, 1168, 1170, 1175, 1177, all referred to the committee on August 28, and dockets number 1432 referred to the committee on September 25. The committee heard testimony from Lenita Cullane, who's a superintendent at the Boston Police Department, Jay Paris, founder of the Youth Police Initiative, a North American Family Institute, Ryan Walsh, Director of the Boston Regional Intelligence Center, BRIC, for the Boston Police Department, Sean Romanowski, Director of Telecommunications for the Boston Police Department, Sergeant Detective Philip Bissonnet, Fugitive Apprehension Unit, Frank DeLuca, Program Coordinator, Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, Carmen Curry, Deputy Superintendent with the Boston Police Department, Christopher Marknessis, Director of Operations Division, Lieutenant Detective Daniel Duff, Commander, Homicide Unit, Boston Police Department, and then Captain Christopher Hamilton, who's the captain for E-18. We were also joined by my colleagues, Counselor Ed Flynn, Counselor Erin Murphy, Council President Rusi Duigien, and Counsel Brian Worrell. Docket number 1168 is a grant order in the amount of $850,000 for the FY24 Boston Regional Intelligence Center earmark awarded by the Commonwealth. Director Walsh discussed docket number 1168, stated that this grant will be used towards personnel costs and funds around eight positions. I want to be clear as Chair for my colleagues and the public, that the title of the grant states that its purpose is related to, quote, "technology and protocols," unquote, but Director Walsh testified that these particular grants have been consistently used towards personnel costs, and that the Commonwealth supports the use of these funds for personnel, despite the title of the grant. The director stated that this grant is a continuation of funding that was approved last year, and the BRIC has been receiving this grant since around 2017. Docket number 1432 is a grant order in the amount of $175,000 for the FY24 Police Reform and Equitable Justice Grant Program awarded by the Target Corporation. Superintendent Cullane and Mr. Paris discussed dockets number 1432, stated that this grant would fund the Youth and Police Initiative, a program that assists in working with youth to break down stereotypes and delve into deeper discussions about the kind of challenges youth and police are facing. Through the Youth and Police Initiative, BPD collaborates with about 150 young people through a two-week interactive scenario-based after-school program, and about 75 police officers who also receive training through this program. The Youth and Police Initiative targets youth who are impacted by gang violence, food insecurity, housing instability, and other risk factors. Dockets number 1286 is a grant order in the amount of $11,200 for the FY23 Safe and Successful Youth Initiative awarded by the Commonwealth. Mr. DeLuca discussed dockets number 1286, stating that this grant will help fund the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative, a program that works with 17- to 24-year-olds, young adults at risk, typically perpetrators or victims of gun violence or street violence. The Safe and Successful Youth Initiative collaborates with the Boston Public Health Commission to provide a combined public health and public safety approach, and introduces participants to healthy lifestyles. Dockets number 1175 is a grant order in the amount of $87,427 for the United States Attorney's Project Safe Neighborhood Initiative awarded by the United States Attorney Office via the Commonwealth. Superintendent Cullane discussed dockets number 1175, stated that this grant will help fund the purchase of surveillance cameras to operate within BPD's existing camera network. These cameras will be placed in the top three highest violent crime police districts, which are areas B2, B3, and C11. She stated that these cameras will help prevent poverty and violent crimes and investigate crimes that have already taken place. This grant will also fund tactical protective shields for police districts to assist with de-escalation skills and techniques. Lastly, this grant will provide funding to the Fugitive Apprehension Unit, which is in need of software database subscriptions, night vision equipment, and other equipment like iPads and body armor upgrades. Dockets number 1166 is a grant order in the amount of $4,125,000 for the FY25 Public Safety Answering Point Support and Incentive Grant awarded by the Commonwealth. And docket number 1170 is a grant order in the amount, excuse me, of $445,865.77 for the FY25 State 911 Training Grant, also awarded by the Commonwealth. Director Marknessis and Deputy Superintendent Curry discussed these two dockets, dockets 1166 and 1170, which are both grants that will help fund all aspects of the 911 Call Center and operations. These grants will also provide funding for the Boston Fire Department, Fire Alarm Division, and Dispatch Center, and Boston's Emergency Medical Service Call Center. Dockets number 1166 is a support incentive grant awarded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Dockets number 1170 will provide funding for training programs for 911 call takers and dispatchers in all three emergency operation center in the city of Boston. Dockets number 1177 is a grant order in the amount of $10,000 for the FY23 National Violent Death Reporting System awarded by the Commonwealth. Lieutenant Detective Duff discussed dockets number 1177, and stated that BPD meets with the federal agency once a year to review and analyze violent crime statistics. This data is then used by the Centers for Disease Control to be compiled on a national level. And lastly, docket number 0911 is a grant order in the amount of $10,000 for the FY24 earmark for Fairmount Housing Development awarded by the Commonwealth. Captain Hamilton discussed dockets number 0911, and stated that these funds are intended to provide additional police patrols of the Fairmount Housing Development to monitor, intervene, and suppress violent crime. As Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving all eight of these dockets from the committee to the full council for discussion and informal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that all eight dockets, dockets number 0911, 1166, 1168, 1170, 1175, 1177, 1286, and 1432 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana, and thank you for all that reading. Thank you, as Chair of the committee, for holding a really informative hearing yesterday. I learned a lot, and it was a great hearing. Just wanted to see if anyone would like to speak on any of these grants. Okay, I'd just like to say that I learned a lot about how we are funding our SSYI program. That was really important to learn, that in working with at-risk youths between the ages of 17 and 24, they get a caretaker, a case manager from BPHC, which I think is a really great model. We learned about the Fairmount Housing Development, getting extra police support there, and of course, so many of us on this council have championed 911 call takers. We also heard from the BRIC, and it was an informative hearing. You know, last year, we also had a hearing where we heard from the BRIC. My staff and I went out to the BRIC a few weeks ago and met with the team for about two hours to talk about the work that they do and to go over some of the questions that we have. Last year, I was underwhelmed by my responses, and I do believe that there's been some progress being made at and out of the BRIC around transparency and accountability, but we're still waiting to hear on the rollout of rules and regulations around the database, around the gang database. We're waiting for a name change. We're waiting to make sure that we are not discriminating, and it's going to be hard to ensure that in its totality, but the issues that have been brought up by the BRIC, by number of court, by our federal court and by our state court regarding discrimination. While I do see some progress, I am still waiting to see more in terms of accountability and transparency, also diversity in the BRIC department. If we have a department that is charged with doing the work of identifying people both quantitatively and qualitatively as members of gangs, we need to make sure that we have a department that's reflective of the diversity of the city, and we're not yet there. And so I will be voting yes on all of these grants except for 1168, the BRIC grant. I am encouraged by some of the progress that my team and I saw a few weeks ago, but we remain wanting in some of the progress and changes that we want to see out of the BRIC. And I know Director Walsh will see her and others are here talking about the department, and we're going to continue those conversations to make sure that we get the accountability and transparency that we need. But of our residents, you know, recently heard about a young man of color who was tagged as gang affiliated, who was really just going through mental health issues, and whose cousin was gang affiliated. And we need to make sure that we are not over-identifying people just as a result of where they live and who their family members are. So I'll be voting no on 1168, and I'll be voting yes on the other dockets. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I also rise just to speak about the BRIC. I mean, and I agree with Madam President that there are serious concerns about, you know, what's called the gang database and how that's utilized. I have serious concerns about people being put on the database just because they were seen speaking to somebody, you know, who's a known gang member, that people can be pulled over, or there could be probable cause for a search just because they're on the database without their knowing it. And, you know, I think it's our job to press to make sure that people's civil liberties aren't being trampled, you know, on the gang database. I also have questions about, you know, what the BRIC is doing to prepare for a possible Trump administration, and how that can be abused even more, and make sure that we protect our citizens, you know, where, you know, we have an administration that's looking for any information, no matter how it's acquired. Also, I'm concerned with BRIC sharing information with states that criminalize abortion and gender-affirming care, and I'd like to make sure we're, you know, we're protecting people's rights across the country, and BRIC is being used as a force for evil in those places. But last week, you know, I did attend a funeral of Kwame Clark, you know, from Mildred Haley Apartments, who was shot and killed in what looks like a gang-related shooting, and so at this time, you know, I, and I'm speaking to residents, people want the police department there, they want to be made to feel safe. And so, you know, in the balance of things, I'm going to vote in favor of it, but, you know, I really think we need to give some serious thought to how the BRIC is used and administered, and I look forward to working with my colleagues to make sure, you know, our residents' constitutional rights are upheld. Thank you.
And Counsel Weber, you mentioned something, another issue that we have brought up and want to, are going to continue to bring up, a form of redress for those who are on the database and want to be removed, or that needs to be made a lot more clear than it is, how people can get the, can, one, determine whether they're on the database and can get themselves removed. So that's something that hopefully we can work on collaboratively together in making that more of a transparent process from the BRIC. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also want to acknowledge, during this debate, the Boston police, the work they are doing in our neighborhoods. We rely on them for so much to keep our neighborhoods safe and healthy. Residents are asking, like Counsel Weber mentioned, residents are asking us for more police in every neighborhood of the city. And again, our police officers are working, consistently working 16 hours per day. I also want to acknowledge the Boston police professional work that they've been doing, especially over the last several months in and around the downtown Boston area in the Boston Common. We have made some progress in the Boston Common, but there's more work to be done. I've met with parents in Back Bay, in downtown Boston, about various schools where drop-off for parents and their children has been very difficult because of the ongoing violence and the ongoing drug dealing taking place right near these schools. But again, want to say thank you to the Boston police. They are making progress, but it's about working together, supporting them. It's not about reimagining police, it's not about defunding police, it's about supporting police, supporting residents so that they have the police needed in their neighborhood so that they're safe and they can take their children to school. We need to show our support at times for the police and their families, and we, as a society, don't do a good job doing that. And that's one of the reasons I believe that the numbers of police are down, and we can't recruit people like we should be because of the negative feedback that the public constantly gives police officers and their families. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I felt it was important to stand up, just given the amount of conversations that we've had and the work that my office has done recently in the last couple of months. I first want to say that I understand the complex history associated with the BRIC. The information sharing between BPS, BPD, BRIC, and ICE during the Trump administration ultimately led to the deportation of an East Boston resident, and that was abhorrent. And so what Counsel Weber is talking about is a very real possibility and something that we should all be worried about. The BRIC has had fair criticisms in the past that it disproportionately affects black and brown men and their families. This has been backed up by lawsuits and court cases that have found that old point systems within the BRIC has placed individuals on a gang database that was faulty at best. It is fair to say that all of those real concerns exist while also recognizing that the BRIC has stopped hate crimes, murders, sexual assaults, kidnappings, and attacks on our LGBTQ neighbors, as well as our Jewish neighbors, and helped to inform police to make data-informed and correct arrests. That is a good thing for maintaining the public safety and criminal justice. And so in full transparency, as I mentioned, I apologize that I could not make this hearing. I had multiple commitments, but thank you for your leadership, Chair, and making sure that there was a hearing. In full transparency, my office has been in deep partnership with this coalition in trying to research and develop some sort of embedded oversight mechanism, which was a recommendation of the Committee on Public Service. Hold on, I want to get this right. The Committee for Public Counsel Service, CPCs, they had asked, who watches the watchers, and what sort of external oversight do we have? Could we get an audit? And so at this time, there is not a clear consensus even among the advocates, and no clear legislative roadmap to achieve what some organizations within the coalition are calling for. And so all of this is to say that the work continues. I will be voting yes on this, because I do think that there is some movement when it comes to new regulations as it relates to governing assessments within the database. So I will be voting yes, but encourage my colleagues to join the conversation. If you're interested, please contact our office, because we are working on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Joe. Counsel Joe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Not just the police doing a great job, but in my short time here, I've also talked to a lot of the people that do the gang intervention work, and especially, there's been a lot of gay activity in my district as well. And they think the BRIC is a vital integral point, and these are the people on the ground that are trying to get these folks on the right track. And so not only that, but we also have to think about, when we read the police blog afterwards, and they say where these people are from, this is a regional, right? The R in BRIC stands for regional. And there, a lot of the times, you'll see, it'll be, you know, someone's name from Randolph, or something, right, coming into Dorchester and shooting somebody, right? Things like that. And so with that, I think we just have to also remember that there are other counties around us that are relying on this, and by doing that, it does make the constituents in my district safer, because we need to make sure we're keeping tabs on those that are coming in and causing trouble in the district before they head back home. But just wanted to make that point. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Coletta Zapata had a really good point, is who watches the watchers? And so it's important that our body does that. And so I want to just reaffirm my no vote and state that it is our job to do the work of transparency and accountability, and we will go back to the BRIC to make sure that we are holding them accountable and making sure that we feel like there is a rollout of the rules and regulations that govern the use of the database in a way that makes us feel comfortable in terms of people's civil rights and civil liberties here in the city of Austin. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. I didn't see your light, so sorry about that. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I just put it on. So thank you so much, Council President. I'll be voting yes on all of these public safety grants today. I had the opportunity last week to meet with Commissioner Cox for, he was very generous with his time, for over an hour and a half about some issues that are happening in District 8. And I really appreciate the partnership that he particularly brings to the City Council. I also want to acknowledge that our conversations went into conversations about culture change, conversations about how we can support the police, but also how we can make the changes necessary. about how we can support the police, but also how we can make the changes necessary to support, I think, our Boston Police. We want to be the best. We want to be the most accountable. We, and I think, in a lot of ways, I have this unique perspective. My sister was a police officer, and I've seen departments that are dysfunctional. I've seen departments that put the safety of officers and the public at risk. And I think the Boston Police Department does a really good job. But having a conversation with the Commissioner, it's clear that he knows there's still work to do as well. And I think we have a lot of work to do. But I also see a lot of hope in his leadership. And I'll be voting yes on these grants. But I want my colleagues to know, I think we should have more conversations. We should be bringing in our police officers and our police department more to discuss a lot of these issues because I would surmise to say that the Commissioner is aligned with the council's opinion. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. I want to thank you again, Counselor Santana, for holding this hearing. It was extremely informative, and it was great to have the BPD here to answer a lot of our questions. So, thank you on that. Counselor, Counselor Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, we're going to go one by one. Seek suspension of, seeks, let me make sure I have my spot. Okay. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0911. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 0911 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1166. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1166 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1168. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1168, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
No.
Counselor Louie Jean, no. Counselor Mejia.
No.
Counselor Mejia, no. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
No.
Counselor Worrell, no.
Thank you. Docket number 1168 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1170. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1170, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 1170 has received 11 votes and the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1170 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1175. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1175 has passed.
Point of clarification?
Counselor Mejia, you have the floor for a point of clarification?
I just heard the clerk say 11. I believe there's 12 of us, or?
That is true. I did pick that up.
I don't know if it's important, but I figured I'd say it.
12, yes, and one absent. Right.
Yeah.
So it's 12.
It's 12.
12.
But you said 11.
Yeah, sorry about that.
I just wanted to show the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Mejia. I also heard that. So, I heard that. Okay, so, we're on 1177, is that right?
Yep.
Is that right? Okay. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1177. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. This committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1177 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1286. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report has been accepted, and docket number 1286 has passed. The Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, seek acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 1432. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote on docket number 1432?
Roll call vote on docket number 1432, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell. Docket number 1432 has received 12 votes and the affirmative.
Docket number 1432 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1425?
Docket number 1425, order for a hearing to discuss inadequate delivery services by the United States Postal Service within Mission Hill and other Boston neighborhoods.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden, the Chair of the Committee on Pilot Agreements, Institutional and Intergovernmental Relations. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1425 on the USPS service delivery. The Committee on Pilot Agreements, Institutional and Intergovernmental Relations held a hearing yesterday, Tuesday, October 8th, to discuss inadequate United States Postal Service delivery in Mission Hill and other Boston neighborhoods. This matter was sponsored by Counselors Durkin, Santana, and Weber, and was referred to the committee on September 18th. In attendance, in addition to the chair, the sponsors, and the sponsors were Counselors Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Louie Jean, and Worrell. Congresswoman Presley also addressed the committee remotely to discuss the congressional delegation's efforts to ensure adequate mail service for residents and constituents as a matter of equity. The committee also discussed recent efforts by Senator Markey to address specific issues that have occurred, such as in Mission Hill. Invited panelists to attend also included Ray Bell, the President of the American Postal Workers Union, Boston Metro Local 100, Tom Rooney, President of the National Association of Letter Carriers, Branch 34, and Scott Hoffman, National Business Agent of the American Postal Workers Union, ALFCIO. Invitations were also sent to the USPS representatives for the Massachusetts and Rhode Island District, and we were disappointed that the invitation was declined. Counselors discussed persistent issues relating to mail service delivery and performance across Boston neighborhoods, staffing levels on particular mail routes within Massachusetts, Rhode Island District, and the context of how postal service was previously managed and invested in, in comparison to a cultural shift in recent years, as a good, as a public good rather than as a for-profit service provider. We had a very robust conversation with the representatives from the postal worker, postal unions. We also had very well-represented attendance from the community and community members who have experienced interruption or delays in their postal service delivery. This issue is of particular note, that it seems to be affecting communities of color, and it's particularly important for elders and folks who rely on delivery of, use of the postal service, delivery of medications, and their financial documents and bills. At this time, the chair, as the chair, I recommend that the matter remain in committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 15, docket number 1425 will remain in committee. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. We will be taking a docket out of order. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1518?
Docket number 1518, Counselors Mejia and Coletta Zapata offer the following: resolution in support of holders of temporary protective status.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And thank you for taking it out of order because we want to make sure that people can go on to work. So, I really appreciate your grace. So, today, I rise to father's resolution in support of temporary protected status, TPS holders. I want to thank my colleagues, Counselor Coletta Zapata and Counselor President Louie Jean, for your leadership in this space and for standing alongside our office on this quest. Together, we represent the voices of the thousands of TPS holders who are a vital part of both our city and our country. Boston has always been a city of immigrants, a community that proudly opens its doors to those fleeing war, persecution, natural disasters, and unimaginable hardships. Today, and every day, I hope, we honor TPS holders who made the difficult journey to the United States and have become a part of our neighborhoods and our daily lives. For more than 30 years, TPS has been a lifeline allowing people to live, work, and build their lives safely and free from the fear of deportation. These are real people, real families, who have made real contributions here in the city of Boston. TPS holders are homeowners, business owners, employers, parents, and neighbors. They play key roles in essential sectors like healthcare, construction, education, and services, and the very sectors that keep our city running. Today, we call the Department of Homeland Security, the U.S. Congress, and the President of the United States to not just extend TPS, but to create a pathway to permanent residency for all TPS holders. We recognize the realities that these individuals are not temporary. They are in part, a part of the American story and a part of Boston's history and story. Our country has always been at its best when we open our arms to those in need and recognize that our diversity is our strength. Let us stand in solidarity with TPS holders and do everything in our power to ensure that they can continue to live and thrive in the city they call home. And I just want to note that, right now, there are an estimated 610, 610, 630 individuals in the United States who hold TPS, representing 16 designated countries within Salvador, Honduras, and Haiti, accounting for 92% of all the TPS holders, many of which live in East Boston, High Park, and Matapan. The TPS holders contribute approximately, get this, y'all, $12.8 billion annually to the U.S. economy, with significant contributions to Boston's local economy. Many TPS holders in Boston and in Massachusetts have lived in the United States for over 20 years. It is time for us to do more. And so, I just want to thank our partners who have been here, holding it down, and who are here in the audience today, for their leadership in this space. So, muchas gracias a los oros también por tu liderazgo en este espacio y por dar una oportunidad a nuestra oficina a trabajar con ustedes para amplificar las voces de todos. Sinceramente, le doy gracias a ustedes por estar aquí hoy y siempre luchando para la gente. Gracias.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. And Counselor Mejia, I'm not sure, were you looking to add a third original co-sponsor?
Oh, my Lord. I called you out in this thing, and I did, I did say your name, but I forgot the official process. Please forgive me. I'd like to suspend Rule 12 and add you as an original co-sponsor. You have been such a leader in this space, and this resolution would not be right without you. So, thank you, and I'm sorry for, I had you in the speech.
I know. I know you did. I know you did. I know you did. Okay. Counselor Mejia, it's the suspension of the rules to add Counselor, Counsel President Louie Jean as a third original co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel President Louie Jean is so added. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I'm grateful to Counselor Mejia for including me in this important resolution. I want to thank my partners in the coalition. Thank you for everything that you do. I have gone to your meetings and listened, and been in partnership with you since I started working in city government in 2018. So, very grateful for your work. In a city where nearly 30%, 30% of residents are foreign-born, we must be a welcoming city that supports immigrants with inclusive, accessible, and meaningful city resources and services. East Boston in particular is a community with a rich immigrant history, where many families have arrived and stayed in pursuit of the American dream. This includes many TPS holders that live in my district from El Salvador, Honduras, and Haiti. And if J.D. Vance is listening in, I think he could learn something right now. Individuals residing in the United States under TPS have fled armed conflict, risk of violent persecution, natural disasters, and other humanitarian crises. These individuals contribute positively to Boston and Massachusetts through participation in our workforce and as active residents in Boston's neighborhood. There are over 450,000 TPS holders that are small business owners, activists in our neighborhood, and hard-working people that provide their families with decency and integrity. These folks are my neighbors, my friends, and part of my chosen family. Many countries whose immigrants have been granted TPS have not resolved internal conflicts, making the premature return of individuals in the United States under TPS dangerous and counterproductive. Any federal immigration policy of the United States that rejects TPS holders rejects basic human decency, hurts Massachusetts and the national economy, and endangers the lives and well-being of hard-working members of our communities. TPS holders are long-term, integrated members of communities across the United States. Moreover, TPS holders' roots extend beyond themselves to their families. Salvadorian, Honduran, and Haitian TPS holders have over 250,000 U.S.-born citizen children. These U.S. citizen children would face serious risks. They would either face separation from their parents or be forced to relocate to a country foreign to them. And to me, this is wrong, and it's immoral. And so, we stand here today, asking Homeland Security, the United States Congress, and the President to do the right thing and grant them a pathway towards permanent status as valued members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Counselor Coletta Zapata and Counselor Mejia, for adding me. This is such an important issue. And muchas gracias para ustedes for all of, por todo su trabajo en este problema. TPS is so, so vitally important to our communities. And I know many of you, when my dad got on the bus in 2019 to Washington, D.C., in the rain, and we walked and marched with people around the country to advocate for TPS. And so, I thank you for being members of our society, for all the advocacy work that you do, for all the taxes that you pay into our country, and all the way that you make the city of Boston what it is. TPS is an important way so that people can continue to live and work here and not fear persecution and not fear going back. And so, I really just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart, from the advocacy, like down in D.C., or to the demonstrations that we've had here on City Hall, to make sure that we are redesignating and extending TPS for holders from El Salvador, from Haiti, from everywhere where they come from. So, I just, I want to thank you for your advocacy, for standing in the gap on behalf of so many, and for being of the voice, and not being intimidated, and not being scared, and for just standing in your power. I know that in Counselor Coletta Zapata's office, Gabriela's mom, Anna has been a vibrant supporter of the TPS committee. And so, I just thank you for all the work. Know that you have allies and supporters here on this council. And even though, as local elected, we don't have jurisdiction over TPS, we will be standing with you, side by side, to advocate for redesignation, to protect TPS. Like Counselor Coletta Zapata stated, you know, I hope there are people listening to see how much we in the city of Boston stand with you and stand with all of our TPS holders. So, thank you again to Counselor Mejia for bringing this issue before the body, because I saw, and I was like, you already know that we here on the council support you. So, thank you for all the work that you do. And I hope that my colleagues join us in supporting this resolution. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I rise, I want to thank Counselor Mejia for your leadership on this issue and for all of our, you know, immigrants here in the city of Boston. Boston is a city, you know, I really support this. As a Dominican immigrant myself, who grew up here in this, who grew up here in the city of Boston, you know, this, this issue is deeply personal to me as well. Boston is a city built by immigrants and refugees, and we have the proud history of all of them seeking safety from violence and disaster. TPS was created to provide a lifeline to individuals who cannot return to their homes, countries, due to the ongoing crisis. And I don't want to repeat, you know, things that have been said. But I do want to repeat what Counselor Mejia did say, which was, you know, these are, these individuals are not just statistics. They are our neighbors and our friends and our coworkers, and they contribute approximately $12.8 billion annually to the U.S. economy. And that's not something that we should take lightly. I also know that we see these people in healthcare, construction, education, and all, all over, you know, not just the city, but all over. know, not just the city, but all over different places in our great country. So I just wanted to rise, I stand with you all, and I just really want to thank the makers, especially Councilor Mejia, for your strong leadership on this. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Pepe. Councilor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And I also want to thank Councilor Mejia for bringing this to the floor today, because this is a very important topic. Back in 2018, when the Trump administration, they actually ordered the termination of temporary protection status for Salvadoran immigrants. I remember, I was at Suffolk University at that time, and I was, I dug really deep into this topic, and I got some statistics about El Salvador specifically, and I want to read them really quickly. So, if Trump was successful in taking away TPS protection from El Salvador recipients, that would cost the U.S. taxpayers $3.1 billion. Secondly, there would be a $6.9 billion reduction to Social Security and Medicare contributions over a period of 10 years. Thirdly, there would be a $45.2 billion reduction in gross domestic product over a period of 10 years. Salvadorans hold a very high employed percentage number at 88%. And that was, that was six years ago. Imagine how high it is today. Many occupy positions of landscaping, housekeeping, construction, business owners, people that have become professionals, and not only that, but their children are now part of our society. And I think it's very important for us to stand in solidarity with them, because they are very much part of this community, and it would be a shame if anything happens to them. We shall protect them. That's why I stand with you in solidarity. Thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Councilors Mejia, Coletta Zapata, and Louis Jean, to suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 1518. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 1518. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Pepe.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 1518 has received 12, 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Gracias. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1511?
Docket Number 1511, Counselor Weber offered the following: Petition for a special law and act directing the City of Boston Police Department to waive the maximum age requirement for Dumie Pemera of Jamaica Plain.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Weber. Counselor Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we seem to have a steady stream of these, but before we use a home rule petition seeking an age waiver for Dumie Pemera of Jamaica Plain, we'd like to be, like to serve as a Boston police officer. Dumie is 39, but will be 40 when he's scheduled to take the police exam in April. Dumie could pay a visit to our office. He's certainly an able-bodied Boston resident. He is an immigrant from Haiti. He speaks English, Haitian Creole, and French. For the last six years, he served as a court officer at the Edward Brook Courthouse, the Boston Municipal Court, but he would like to serve his community more and expressed an interest in participating and helping the community policing model with the Boston Police Department. You know, I, we obviously have heard a lot about vacancies, you know, at the police department, and part of that are fewer people applying and fewer people wanting to do a very difficult job. You know, I'm proud to support somebody from the community who wants to step up and serve in the police department. I have, I asked that we, I've asked the Government Ops Chair to suspend and pass, and she nods her head. But I don't know if that's the proper procedure here, but I would like to suspend and pass today, and I ask that my colleagues support this age waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Pepe, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counselor Weber, to suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 1511. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on Docket Number 1511. Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louis Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louis Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Pepe.
Yes.
Counselor Pepe, yes. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket Number 1511 has received 11 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket Number 1511 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1512?
Docket Number 1512, Counsel Flynn offered the following: Order for a hearing to explore utilizing surcharges to provide residential tax relief.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I add, Councilor Mejia as a co-sponsor, please.
Councilor Mejia is so added. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the city of Boston faces projected budget shortfalls in the coming years, residents have also noted their concerns for an increase in residential property tax. In the next year, property taxes are expected to increase anywhere from 4% to 9% or even higher. To find ways to mitigate some of this tax burden, I am filing this hearing to explore utilizing surcharges to provide residential tax relief. The state of Massachusetts currently has a number of surcharges, including a 911 surcharge, a police training surcharge, a convention center financing surcharge, among others. These surcharges help support different programs across the state. For example, the Convention Center Financing Act authorizes surcharges to finance the construction and renovation of convention centers across the state. Under this, there are three types of surcharges. The Boston Sightseeing Tour Surcharge, which 5% of the sales price of any ticket for any water- or land-based sightseeing tourist venue, entertainment, cruise, trolley tours. Boston Vehicle Rental Transaction Surcharge, $10 for each vehicle rental car contract that is signed or executed in Boston for passenger car, truck, van, and trailer. Parking Facility Surcharges in the cities of Boston, Springfield, Yanowuista, $2 per day on any vehicle which parks in any public facility. In recent years, these fund, these fund surcharges have been used to balance the statewide budget. With the abundance of tourism that Boston receives each year, the city council can explore whether it can direct these surcharge revenues to support residential tax relief for Boston residents. As we brace for economically challenging times, we should look at different ways to help with residential property tax relief, including exploring how we can utilize surcharges, just like the state. Given the great amount of tourism that we have in the city, we can explore whether this is possible, to redirect these funds to the city of Boston, or to look at other types of surcharge charges to provide residential tax relief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Flynn for adding me as an original co-sponsor. I usually like to insert myself into conversations that I think are creative and innovative and give us an opportunity to think outside of the constructs that we have been operating under, so really excited to have this important conversation. I'm looking forward to participating in the hearing to explore new and innovative ways that we can support our small businesses and our mom-and-pop shops, many who are already feeling the pressure of the rising property taxes. This hearing is also important for us to figure out how we can help support our small mom-and-pop landlords and also property owners. I think that this is a conversation worth having. It's an exciting opportunity to learn more about how tourism-related surcharges, like those from sightseeing or vehicle rentals, could be used for property tax relief, and now and even in the future. If we can find ways to ease that burden while supporting residents, I think everybody will win. I also think that this is an opportunity for us to explore every option that will provide real relief without putting additional stresses on those who are already struggling. And I'd like to just uplift that, you know, we have been loud about looking at not just surcharges, but I think looking at our higher, our higher educational institutions, who are occupying so much space here, and we can't tap into those dollars. I think that we are well-positioned, now that we find ourselves in this situation, to get a little bit creative. And I think that everybody who's doing business in the city of Boston should step up, and looking forward to having the conversation and inviting those who are struggling to make their ends meet to be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden and Murphy, Weber, and Worrell. Docket Number 1512 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1513?
Docket Number 1513, Counselor Braden and Pepe offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the use of battery energy storage systems in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Docket 1513, Battery Energy Storage System, Battery Energy Storage Systems, or BES. I'd like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Worrell as a third original co-sponsor.
Counselor Braden, suspension of the rules. Add Counselor Worrell as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Worrell is so added. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you. Battery Energy Storage Systems, or BES, are a large-scale battery storage facilities and are a rapidly growing technology with huge potential for strengthening our electrical grid and achieving a carbon-free future. There are two distinct advantages of BES. Firstly, provide crucial battery backup to quickly provide power in cases of grid volatility or failure, and this is important given the vulnerability of our current electric grid and notable instances of outages in the city of Boston. Second, they allow power generated through renewable resources of wind, such as wind and solar, et cetera, to be stored long-term and then released to customers when it's not windy or sunny, or when demand, and when demand peaks. As such, BES plays a crucial role in sustainable energy and the transition to a carbon-free, a carbon-zero Boston. However, there are safety concerns and challenges posed by BES technology due to their reliance on large lithium-ion batteries. Lithium-ion batteries present a unique challenge to firefighters and emergency management since fires caused by lithium batteries, ion batteries, can quickly escalate and prove extremely difficult to extinguish. Additionally, because they need to quickly provide backup power to customers, BES facilities are typically placed in high-density urban areas, which obviously creates risk. Currently, there are two proposed BES facilities, facility projects in Boston, but this number will surely increase. The U.S. Energy Information Administration predicts that BES usage will double in 2024 alone, given our ambitious climate goals and the advances in technology. It would be wise for the city council to hold a hearing and invite experts on battery storage technology, the Boston Fire Department, Environmental Department, et cetera, to educate us on this emerging technology. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Pepe. Counselor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counselor Braden, for inviting me to be an original co-sponsor of this important hearing order. As our city technology continues to grow, we must prepare and upgrade our aging infrastructure to effectively power our daily lives. As stated in the docket, there is a proposed BES to be constructed on the Hyde Park-Mattapan border of Cummins Highway, that is behind the Stop &amp; Shop on the American Legion Plaza, next to Craneledge Woods, and next to Anheuser Development. I'm grateful to the Mountain Home Canterbury and American Legion Highway Neighborhood Association, which I share with Counselor Worrell, for engaging with the Eversource team last year to present about and discuss BSS to the community at multiple meetings. Their leadership in advocating for effective, clear information about what BESs are, the continuously updated safety precautions around them, the temporary woes residents will face during construction and implementation, as well as early discussions on community benefits, should be replicated and expanded upon for future installations throughout the city. BESs are necessary emergency preparedness as our world continues to grow, putting more demand on our power grids that can lead to catastrophic outcomes in the event of a grid failure. Our city deserves to know what constructing them could entail, as well as technology around them. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Counselor Braden and Counselor Pepe for adding me as an original co-sponsor and introducing this hearing order. I'm especially invested in this discussion because one of the proposed battery energy storage systems, projects may be coming to my district. BES is a big part of our goal to make Boston carbon-neutral by 2050, helping us store renewable energy so we can use it when we need it most. But as we explore these projects, we need to look into the challenges around safety and land use. Most of the systems use lithium-ion batteries, and we know they can present risks. I think this is a clear reminder on why we need clear guidelines and proactive community engagement around these systems and these storage systems. As we expand BES, we should make sure it's done thoughtfully, aligned with our climate goals, and keeping our neighborhoods safe. I'm looking forward to this conversation, to the hearing, from everyone involved in how we can find a balanced, sustainable way forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. I want to thank the makers for bringing this forward. I wish I could be fourth course sponsor, because this is something that I'm very passionate about, and presumably this will be going to my committee, so I look forward to the hearing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Chair, maybe after. But the climate crisis does require us to be bold to actually meet our carbon neutrality goals for 2050. I actually got a chance to understand fully what battery storage is after looking into microgrids. A microgrid allows for the generation of power closest to those where it will be dispersed. Delivering power over a central grid is inefficient, and it loses up to 15% of its power during transit. And so I think there's an opportunity here to understand how that conversation fits into this, if the makers are willing, and then also looping in folks from the Healey-Driscoll administration. There was a recent office that was created as they, as we transition off of burning fossil fuels into electrification and other forms of clean energy, but they just recently created the Office of Energy Transformation, which is headed by Melissa Lavinson, so I think that she could be a wonderful expert involved in this conversation. So, looking forward to the discussion, and I just want to thank the maker for bringing it forward. Thanks.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Coletta Zapata, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber. Please add the chair. Docket Number 1513 will be referred to the Committee on Environmental Justice, Resiliency in Parks. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1514?
Docket Number 1514, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding information on residential tax relief proposal.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Requesting documents relating to residential tax relief proposal. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn, to suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 1515, 1514. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. This docket has passed. Mr. Clerk, could you please read Docket Number 1515?
Docket Number 1515, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Order requesting certain information under Section 17F regarding information on Boston Landmarks Commission.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. 17F request relating for documents on the Landmarks Commission. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Flynn, to suspension of the rules and passage of Docket Number 1515. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. Docket Number 1515 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docket Number 1516?
Docket Number 1516, Counselors Louis Jean and Mejia offer the following: Resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day.
The chair recognizes Counsel President Louis Jean.
The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Today, I'm proud to introduce a resolution recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. This resolution honors the rich history, culture, and contributions of the indigenous people of this Commonwealth, particularly the Massachusetts people. On the traditional territory the city of Boston is situated, including the Ponkawag tribe, who lived around the Blue Hills area. We must continue to acknowledge the difficult legacy of colonization and the dispossession of these lands. In displacing indigenous peoples from their ancestral lands, we attempted to erase their cultures, languages, and ways of life. This legacy is highlighted with broken treaties, forced removals, acts of violence, all of which have had lasting effects on indigenous populations, including the Massachusetts and the Ponkawag people. By acknowledging this painful history, we are committing to a more honest understanding of our past and to advancing justice and healing for indigenous communities. In addition to the Massachusetts and Ponkawag people, I want to recognize the connections to other indigenous nations, including the Wampanoag, the Nipmunk, the Penetook, and the Powtucket tribes, who have shaped the history and culture of this region. This resolution encourages all Bostonians to reflect on these histories, honor the indigenous communities that continue to enrich our city, and to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on Monday with respect and recognition that they deserve. So I want to thank former Mayor Kim Janey for declaring it Indigenous Peoples' Day, and for Mayor Wu for continuing that, and for this council for passing this resolution, and for continuing to pass this resolution in recognition of our indigenous people on whose land we stand and work every day. Want to give a shout-out to the North American Indian Center of Boston located in Counselor Weber's district for all of the work that they do to educate us and to continue to reclaim their place in their land. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I thank my co-sponsor, and I will be seeking suspension and passage. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to President Counselor Louie Jean for adding me as an original co-sponsor. And I just want to rise to just share that, you know, today we're recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. We honor the deep history and presence of the indigenous peoples here in Boston and across the Americas. For far too long, indigenous cultures, traditions, and voices have been silenced and erased or minimized in our history books. But today, we are here making space to reflect on those stories, their contributions, and their resilience. This day reminds us of the survival, the strength, and the ongoing fight of indigenous peoples to reclaim their heritage, languages, and ways of life. Boston is home to over 11,000 indigenous people from Massachusetts, and it is not lost on us that as we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, that we also encourage all of us to think about the history that we've inherited and how we can do better by the people who have been here long before any of us, that this is about more than just a holiday, but it's about justice, healing, and understanding. Let us honor the indigenous caretakers of this land, reflect on our shared history, and commit to a future where indigenous voices are heard, protected, and celebrated every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else looking to speak? I just want to thank Madam President and Counselor Mejia for introducing this resolution. As we celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day, it's a moment to reflect on Boston's indigenous roots and honor the tribes that continue to enrich our community. I also like to point out and applaud the work of the Equity Cabinet as dedicated program manager focused on indigenous communities, providing a valuable resource for anyone seeking to learn more and support indigenous initiatives here in Boston. Let us use today as an opportunity to connect, celebrate, and support indigenous voices in our city. Counselor Louie Jean and Counselor Mejia seek suspension of the rules. Oh, yes. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselor Braden, Counselor Coletta Zapata, Counselor Durkin, Counselor Fitzgerald, Counselor Flynn, Counselor Murphy, Counselor Peppin, Counselor Santana, Counselor Weber, and Counselor Worrell. Counselor Louie Jean and Mejia seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1516. Mr. Clerk, could you please do a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on docket number 1516, Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Braden, yes. Counselor Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta Zapata, yes. Counselor Durkin.
Yes.
Counselor Durkin, yes. Counselor Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counselor Fitzgerald, yes. Counselor Flynn.
Yes.
Counselor Flynn, yes. Counselor Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counselor Louie Jean, yes. Counselor Mejia.
Yes.
Counselor Mejia, yes. Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy, yes. Counselor Peppin.
Yes.
Counselor Peppin, yes. Counselor Santana.
Yes.
Counselor Santana, yes. Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Weber, yes. And Counselor Worrell.
Yes.
Counselor Worrell, yes. Docket number 1516 has received 12 votes in the affirmative.
Thank you. Docket number 1516 has been adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We are now on to docket number 1517. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1517?
Docket number 1517, Counselor Fitzgerald, offer the following: Resolution declaring October 18, 2024, as Ryan Woods' Day in the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to add Counselor Santana as an original co-sponsor.
Counselor Santana is so added. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
I would also like to suspend the rules and add Counselor Coletta Zapata as a third original co-sponsor.
Counselor Fitzgerald, see suspension of the rules to add Counselor Coletta Zapata as a third original co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections. Counselor Coletta Zapata is so added. Counselor Fitzgerald, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is the resolution to declare October 18 as Ryan Woods' Day in the city of Boston. We did the presentation earlier today, so I would now like to suspend and pass this resolution if no one else would like to drop.
Thank you. Okay. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Okay, Counselors, the Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I know we didn't get to speak when you did the presentation, but I wanted Commissioner Woods to hear this, so maybe it's recorded afterwards, but I just wanted to uplift and acknowledge that whenever we get a call, particularly from a lot of the softball players, mainly who don't speak English, around an issue with their park, Commissioner Woods has always answered the call and has always shown up for folks, and I think that in the short time that I got to know him and work alongside him, he has always been a thought partner in terms of how we can address a lot of the issues that were bubbling up to the top around quality of life. And so I just want to thank him for his leadership and congratulate him as he moves on. I think it's important for us to acknowledge those folks who are really doing hard work for the city, and it's a loss for us, but I'm excited to know that he's still going to be with us in other ways. So, congratulations, Commissioner Woods. We see you and we appreciate you.
Thank you, Counselor Mejia. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I had the opportunity to work with Commissioner Woods for seven years. He's been very professional, hardworking, dedicated, returns phone calls, comes into the office, visits parks, and treats people fairly, and that's what a city worker is all about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and I really wanted to do right by Ryan and just stand up, and this is really for him, but just thank him for the many years of his service. It's been an honor and a pleasure working with him, and many of you know, when you call, text, or email him, even if it's on a Saturday, when he's at the water park with his kids, as recently happened, he answers the call and he gets it done, and I just want to thank him so much for his responsiveness. He's an exemplary public servant. He is representative of what's best of us. He's the exact type of person that you want working in city government, and so we're going to miss his expertise, his institutional knowledge, and his effectiveness. And so I want to thank him from back in 2018 when we put up allergy awareness signs to his work on Ryan Playground, Nazaro Center, Langone Park, Noise Park, City Yards, I started to name them, and I'm going to miss a bunch, but even as something as little as making sure the trash barrels are changed in the Nazaro Center area in between those two streets, it just really has been an honor working with him, and I thank him. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Worrell. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Yeah, I just want to rise and echo what my council colleagues have been saying. You say thank you to Commissioner Woods for his years of service, his dedication to the city of Boston, and also the wealth of knowledge that he has, and then just always just being responsive. You know, in all of our district councils, we know like our parks are a big part of our constituency and our residents, and just to say like, we could be proud of all of our parks here in the city of Boston, and that's because of his leadership. So, thank you and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Council President. I just wanted to thank Counselors Fitzgerald and Santana and Coletta Zapata for honoring Ryan Woods. He, having a lot of park land in my district and getting to work with him so closely, I think there have been times I've called him late at night worried that the snow is going to be plowed through the Boston Common. I'm sorry, and I really want to thank Lauren Woods, his wonderful wife, who has had to sit by while he gets the calls from counselors about different issues. He is just one of those public servants that you don't see that type of public servant come through the city of Boston every day, and 24 years is a really long time, and I'm hoping to see his leadership in other ways, and hopefully maybe a commissioner or two that he can be a part of. His leadership in the city of Boston has been incredible, and it's just been a real joy to work with him and look forward to working with him in his next role. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The Chair recognizes Counselor Braden. Counselor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also want to rise and thank Commissioner Ryan Woods for his incredible service to the city of Boston. I know in Alston-Brighton, we've had some ups and downs with our park situation, but he's always been, taken my calls and listened attentively, and he's been a very great partner as we work together to improve our parks in Alston-Brighton, so I want to thank him very much. I wish him all the best in the next chapter, and go Ryan. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I also just want to congratulate Ryan. I have nothing but great experience working with him in this role and previous roles ever since I was an intern in city council almost eight years ago now. So I just want to extend congratulations, tell him thank you. I'm probably going to call him later on to also just say thank you for all the work he did. I mean, taking care of places like Ammon Park, Adams Park, Ross Playground, those are just a few of many that he has done so much for, and I know that not only I appreciate him, but the residents that also have reached out to him. He's very responsive to everyone, and shout-out to his wife also, Sergeant Woods. So we get to have not one but two Woods working for the city of Boston. Thank you all for the work that they did, that he did and she continues to do. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say I think it's remarkable that he's devoted 24 years to the city and is still like relatively young to go off and like live a whole other career, and that just shows how dedicated he's been to the city from a very, very young age. And so, congratulations. I just want to echo everyone's comments to him on this next step, and I'm sure we will still interact with him when he's at Meet Boston. So, would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Durkin, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell, please have the chair. Counselors Fitzgerald, Santana, and Coletta Zapata seek suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1517 and adoption of docket number 1517. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 1517 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1519?
Docket number 1519, Counselors Flynn and Murphy, offer the following: Resolution in support of the International Longshoremen's Association.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At the last council meeting, I tried to file this late-file resolution in support of the International Longshoremen Association in the midst of their ongoing strike at that time. The late file was objected to even before I had a chance to speak on it, and now I am putting the matter before the body. This union is the largest union of maritime workers in North America. It represents 45,000 members. Last week, dock workers at 36 ports along the East and Gulf Coast went on strike against the U.S. Marine Alliance, an alliance of container shipping lines and port operators after contract negotiations between the ILA and USMX reached an impasse. The labor dispute was regarding wage increase on power with West Coast workers, as well as protection against automation. In the port of Boston, longshoremen went on strike at the Conley Terminal last Tuesday, and I joined my father, who was still a longshoreman, on the picket line in support of dock workers and working families. Thankfully, last Thursday, the ILA suspended their strike after a tentative agreement was reached. However, outstanding issues remain, like automation. Negotiations are expected to continue until January next year. During these uncertain times, it is critical that the city of Boston reaffirm our support for working families, the right to collectively bargain, and to stand with longshoremen seeking fair wages and protection. These are our neighbors, youth sports coaches and volunteers, recognized for dedication in our city in a number of areas, including in the recovery community. They play a critical role in South Boston, in Charleston, and other neighborhoods in getting men and women into recovery. I know hundreds of them that longshoremen have helped. I hope my city council colleagues will join me today in a show of support and respect, really, for longshoremen, our hard-working dock workers and their demands of fair wages and protection against automation. In the final analysis, we allowed emergency resolutions in recent weeks to move forward. It was unprecedented during my time on the city council that the city council, this body, blocked a resolution in support of working families on strike even before an argument was made. In my opinion, in the view of many in the labor movement, indefensible, unconscionable to let procedural politics get in the way of our support for working families and collective bargaining. Over the weekend, I was at one of the hotels in my district, standing with the local 26 Unite workers, men and women fighting for a fair contract. My entire life, I have always known this body and this city to stand for social and economic justice for working people. After last meeting, I can no longer say that. I'm thankful for the opportunity to speak for working people today, not just in my district, but across the state. It's easy for us to say we all support working families today, a week after good news that a lot of key areas have been resolved, but it was a lot harder to do it last week, and we failed. Pressure was put on us, pressure was put on this body, to block a resolution in support of working men and women. We failed that test. This body needs to get back to supporting working men and women and families, as well as respecting this institution. And, Madam Chair, may I add Counselor Murphy on this as well? Thank you.
She's on it. The Chair recognizes Counselor Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This resolution, which I feel is extremely uncontroversial and was blocked last week while the ILA members were still on strike, I was happy to hear that the union was able to end the strike swiftly in about two days and did get their members a 62% pay increase over the next six years. There is still more work to do. I will continue to stand with them as they work on other key issues in their contract, but I do want to stand, congratulate the longshoremen and women, and many who Counselor Flynn mentioned live in Charleston, live in South Boston. I know personally from my work with them in the recovery world, so congratulations to this, you know, good news that they got recently, but we still have to continue to stand by them and work as they continue their issues. So, thank you, and I hope that this body will pass this today. Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Chair. As District Eight City Councilor, I am in strong support of ILA's wage demands with USMX, and I'm heartened to see a tentative agreement on record wages being reached and an extension of collective bargaining process. When I saw the late file on our desk, I had questions, and I didn't have time to ask those questions in the council meeting. The hard-working men and women of the ILA deserve fair wages and reflect their essential contributions to Boston's economy and the vitality of our ports. Looking ahead, we must acknowledge that Boston's port performance needs improvement to remain competitive in the global maritime economy. At rank 75 out of 405 global ports analyzed, our current standing in the World Bank's latest Container Port Performance Index indicates room for improvement, but I'm not an expert on that because I'm the city councillor for a district that has five neighborhoods. So I needed to look into what was filed, I needed to do my own due diligence, and I hope that my colleagues will respect that I needed to do that due diligence to be able to put my name behind something. This body consistently listens to Boston residents on what are some of the biggest challenges in living in Boston, and time and time again, cost of living is highlighted for me, the cost of groceries, the cost of imported goods. A Boston with the most efficient ports in the world would help grow the economic pile[1773.78] would help grow the economic pile of our city while lowering the cost of goods and services for all who live here. And as District Eight's councillor, I am always thinking about individual residents and what they need to do to make it. So when I read the text of the ordinance, I had some questions. I do plan to vote yes today. But I think we have in front of us a challenge and an opportunity, one that I won't be involved in as a district councillor, but as a nation we do, to enhance our port efficiency and enhance our global standing while ensuring that these improvements can create better conditions and opportunities for our city's workforce. The path forward must balance technological advancement with strong labor protections, fair compensation, and ensuring that increased productivity relates to shared prosperity for our port workers and for the broader Boston community. But I hope that my colleagues respect that when something arrives on our desk, we have to evaluate it. I have to be able to put my name behind something that I'm voting on, and I needed time to vote on it. I needed time to think about it. And I had been following this for a long time. But I do stand with workers. I do plan to support this initiative. But I wish, again, that my colleagues would pick up the phone before calling a newspaper. I think that's important. I think that's part of collegiality. And I think that's part of being a leader, is really having those conversations prior to coming to the council floor. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And this is just more of a personal note from my family. The longshoremen of Boston have a long and storied history in the port. And Mary's grandfather, my spouse's grandfather, her paternal grandfather was a union longshoreman in Charleston. And he was an Irish immigrant. He was six foot four at the time. At the time, when most, the average man was five foot six, so he was a giant. And we have a photograph on the wall of, as an older man, where he had lost fingers in doing his work as a longshoreman. And we still have his hooks that he used to lift bales of cotton and God knows what, and barrels. The longshoremen, the life and the working conditions of longshoremen have improved immensely in the last 100 years since John McCarthy was a longshoreman in Charleston. Safety and efficiency has improved greatly. I remember when so much more automation was introduced in the 1970s and 80s. There were strikes in England, as there were strikes in Britain and strikes here about resistance to the introduction of mechanization and mechanical moving of cargo. That increased productivity. There's always a balance between improving productivity and ensuring that our workers have secure livelihoods and are able to continue to support their families. So I applaud our colleagues, Councilor Flynn and Councilor Murphy, for this resolution. I am grateful for the heritage of longshoremen in the city of Boston. And I will happily support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'm always curious about how we ended up here, but we're here now. And it's just for my own exercise and for me to understand kind of the dynamics, there was an assumption that the colleagues here were not in support of something that you had filed, and then it got shut down. So I don't remember that. It wasn't my recollection of that situation. It makes me feel like we weren't supportive of workers. And I never want that to be the narrative that gets out into these streets because I don't think that that's a fair characterization of this body. If anything, I've seen this body stand loud and proud on behalf of workers. And so it's really important for me to respectfully say that in this space. I don't know why it was withdrawn, or what happened, or how we ended up here and not last week, and here we are. But it does make me wonder around our process. And I just think that we have an opportunity, as Councilor Durkin mentioned earlier. It presents an opportunity for us to really look at our protocols, policies, and procedures and our norms around bringing things into the council, what feels like a fair process, have we given it enough time? Like, I think all of those things would really be helpful, considering that we still have, you know, another year or so with this particular legislative term to go, to really think through kind of like how we're going to move forward, just some norms and some practices. Councilor Durkin and others have mentioned, you never called me, you know, maybe picking up the phone, that everybody does those things. Everybody functions differently in terms of how they pass legislation. When I first came onto the council, I was never one for whipping up votes. That's just not how I work. I feel like I'm always going to find out whether people are with me or not here in the chamber and let that be a public discourse. That's just what good governance looks like, and that's what transparency is all about. So whipping up votes was just never the thing. Now, I understand that it's good to have conversations before you walk in so that there aren't no surprises every day. I am always surprised by something else. So I think that in terms of just norming, storming, and conforming, and building relationships in terms of how we function, I think that we're, we have an opportunity to really think about. You know, Councilor Santana sent out an amazing email from his team around what you do, you don't remember, I'm going to tell you, how to set up committee hearings. What are the steps and protocols and procedures that work for your office, right? Every office functions differently. I think it's important for us to see what that looks like. Yeah, you did. It was at the beginning. You stopped doing that? But you did it, and it was good. It was a good practice. You showed people what needed to happen. And I think if every committee chair does a one-pager of here are the norms, here are the protocols and procedures that work, here's what you can expect, here's how many hearings I'm willing to have, here's what it will look like before we take it up for a vote. I think infrastructure will really help us as we continue to work through the next eight or nine months that we have together as a legislative body, right? Because if we're trying to get our things passed and we're trying to get our issues heard, I think it's just a recommendation for us to consider. People can do it individually. We can create a norm. I don't know, but I just think that in the interest of relationship building and so that, you know, people don't feel like they're being isolated or left out, or whatever the case is, is that we need to have some sort of standard that we can all agree upon and work with. I think that that will help fan out so much of the chaos that comes in this chamber when people feel isolated.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to Councilor Mejia for her comments, and they were very helpful, and I respect them. One, two points I wanted to make was my hearing order resolution was blocked. And then there was another hearing order, emergency resolution, that went forward, also a labor-related issue. I believe it was on the post office. So to me, it wasn't consistent. That was one of the issues I had. I wish there was a process where we can stand up and support a piece of legislation or a hearing order based on what it's about and not who it's from. The second point I wanted to make was I did take this issue personal after Wednesday's vote because both my grandfathers are longshoremen. And one of my grandfathers ended up with tuberculosis from working on the dock. So when I brought this forward and it was blocked on me, I did take that personal because I do know the incredible role longshoremen play in our city. And during the pandemic especially, they helped unload these ships, cargo ships, so supplies could reach people across New England, across the country, really. Boston is the closest port coming in from Europe, and it's a strong and vibrant port. But I have tremendous respect for longshoremen and their families. And not only in their job that they do, but in the recovery community, that they play a real critical role in this city in recovery issues. And if it wasn't for longshoreman family, a lot more people would not have access to recovery services. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Would anyone like to add their name? Oh, I will, okay. Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell, Mejia. Please add the chair. Councilors Flynn and Murphy, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1519. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 1519 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1520?
Docket number 1520, Counselor Mejia offered the following: Resolution recognizing the contributions and legacy of Alberto Vasallo Jr.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mejia. Councilor Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, it is an honor to stand here and recognize Mr. Alberto Vasallo Jr., a true visionary and a force for the Latino community, not only in Boston, but across New England. For decades, Mr. Vasallo has given our community a voice, a platform, and a sense of pride through his work. When you think of El Mundo Boston, you don't just think of a newspaper. You think of a movement, a movement that has empowered countless Latinos, connected generations, and bridged gaps within our community. Mr. Vasallo's leadership has made that possible. He didn't just create a space for our stories to be told. He made sure our stories were heard, understood, and valued. Mr. Vasallo has spent his life lifting others up, celebrating our youth with the Latino Youth Recognition Day. Actually, it's been going on for the last 24 years and giving a platform to so many. He believes that our community deserves to be seen, respected, and given the tools to succeed. His journey from Havana, Cuba, to Boston is one that reflects resiliency and determination, the same qualities he's passed on to so many of us. Through his work, he's shown us what is possible when we believe in our potential and our right to be at the table. Mr. Alberto Vasallo Jr. is more than a media figure. He's a community leader, a role model, and an inspiration. Today, we recognize his legacy and the lasting impact he has had on the city, and we thank him for making Boston a better and more inclusive place for all of us. This Friday, we're going to be honoring Mr. Vasallo as our Elder of the Year. We're doing a luncheon for Hispanic elders, and we wanted to uplift his work. One of the things that he mentioned in his interview was that if he had the opportunity to be born again, and he had the opportunity to be born rich or poor, that he would choose to be born poor again. And that just speaks volumes to his work here and his legacy, if you will, even though he's still living. That when it comes to coming to this country, and many of you know, immigrants come here in the search of an American dream. And Mr. Vasallo worked at a factory, worked his way up, and established a brand that today, his younger, one of his sons, Alberto Vasallo, continues to carry on. And I think that goes to say a lot, not just about a dream, but actually something that has been fulfilled. So, Mr. Vasallo, we see you, we appreciate you, and we cannot wait to celebrate you. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Pepe. Councilor Pepe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Councilor Mejia, for recognizing Mr. Alberto Vasallo Jr. because the work that he has done in the Latino community, the Hispanic community, is thankless. And he just continues to be someone I admire, look up to because the business that he made, the community that he continues to build, it's just something that you cannot imagine that it's easy work. And El Mundo newspaper is a free newspaper for the community that provides the community with really helpful information, resources, news about what's going on in Massachusetts, not just in the city of Boston. But it's somewhere that I actually look for information to make sure that our residents are getting the necessary information that they need. And I'm very glad and I respect also his son, Alberto Vasallo III, because he's continued that legacy. So I know that the Vasallo family is a proud Latino family in the city of Boston and the state of Massachusetts. And I'm very thankful for the work that they've done for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank Councilor Mejia for offering this resolution. I want to also just congratulate Alberto Vasallo Jr. for all the work that he's done in the community.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also rise to stand up and support Alberto, the incredible role he plays in our community throughout greater Boston, bringing news to people, but also bringing and ensuring that the Latino community is treated fairly, treated with respect. He's a wonderful person and has contributed greatly to our city and our Commonwealth. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Mejia, suspension of the rules. Well, first, would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta Zapata, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Pepe, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Councilor Mejia, suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1520. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. This docket has passed, has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 1521?
Docket number 1521, Counselor Flynn offered the following: Resolution in support of domestic violence and sexual assault committee at the Boston City Council.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. Councilor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At last week's city council meeting, we recognized October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We talked about the important work that many are doing to support survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault. I thank the makers in all the remarks offered by all of my colleagues on this critical issue. I'm respectfully asking us to consider a standalone committee on domestic violence and sexual assault, which I have advocated for since joining the council. In nearly seven years on the council, I have been deeply involved with this issue of domestic violence and sexual assaults, holding a number of city council hearings on this issue going back to 2018, 2019, 2021, and then with city council president, now Attorney General Andrea Campbell, as well as resolutions with Counselor Flaherty recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I work closely with a number of organizations, including the Asian Task Force Against Domestic Violence, CASAMIRNA, to try to continue the work of my mother, Kathy Flynn, who sought to support survivors of domestic violence during her time as First Lady of Boston. At our last meeting, I mentioned some of the data compiled by the National Center for Injury Prevention and Control and elsewhere. 34% Massachusetts women, 31% Massachusetts men experienced physical violence, sexual violence, or stalking by their intimate partner. 11% of high school students, 6% of middle school students have also reported this type of assault. So I'm asking, requesting respectfully, if we're able to consider having a standalone committee that deals with this issue. We also know that the city of Boston Public Health is doing exceptional work now on this. And they actually recently established a new office on domestic violence. Maybe it's an opportunity for us to partner with the city of Boston Public Health to talk about domestic violence. It impacts greatly my district. It impacts the AAPI community, which I represent a large population of AAPI. It has a large, it impacts a large immigrant community, impacts every walks of life, really, including the LGBTQ community, which I have a large community as well. So again, I'm asking if my colleagues will stand with me, establish this committee, give us an opportunity to do some research, talk to survivors, see how we can partner with the city of Boston Public Health. I think it would go a long way in ensuring that survivors of domestic violence are heard, resources are provided, and enforcement is addressed through city of Boston, the police department, the district attorney's office, the Family Justice Center as well. So I'm asking my colleagues to stand with me on this important matter. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Last week, I filed a hearing order on sexual assault and domestic violence as a victim of sexual assault myself. I filed the hearing order, the resolution, two years in a row, on Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month. And this week, I am objecting to this resolution, and I'm referring it to the Rules Committee. So, Mr. Clerk, that will be going to the Rules Committee. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel orders?
Docket number 1522, Counsel Lujen for Counsel Worrell, personnel order. Docket number 1523, Counsel Lujen for Counsel Durkin, personnel order.
The chair moves to passage of dockets number 1522 and 1523. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The personnel orders- Thank you. The personnel orders have passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Also, thank you for everyone who's pulling from green sheets that I know of today for letting central staff know in advance, it has been helpful for their internal process. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata, and then Counselor Durkin, and then Counselor Santana. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I'm seeking to pull docket 1167 from the Committee on Environmental Justice Sustainability in Parks.
Mr. Clerk, could you please read that docket into the record?
From the Committee on Environmental Justice Resiliency in Parks, docket number 1167, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $1 million in the form of a grant for the stove replacement program awarded by the United States Environmental Protection Agency to be administered by the Environment Department. The grant will fund to educate residents on electric cooking and its environmental health benefits.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counselor Coletta Zapata. Absent objection, docket number 1167 is properly before the body. Counselor Coletta Zapata, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and to the clerk. The city of Boston received this $1 million in funding from the EPA for a gas stoves replacement pilot program. The city will partner with the Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation and the Boston Housing Authority to replace 85 gas stoves with electric induction stoves in Dorchester. The project will involve the replacement of gas stoves, major improvements to electrical infrastructure in individual units and/or entire buildings, and training for residents on how to use induction equipment. Each resident participating in the program will receive a free cooking demonstration, stipend, and a new set of cookware. The goal of this program is to educate residents on electric cooking and its environmental and health benefits, improve workforce development by catalyzing green jobs, and encourage our partners to scale up their decarbonization efforts by providing support for their first decarbonization project in their building. The project will also address public health impacts, including asthma in many neighborhoods where there is a disproportionately high number of asthma incidents. To measure the outcomes and impact of this program, the city intends to partner with Boston University to conduct air quality monitoring, evaluate user experience, and model the health and cost-benefit analysis for future projects. More broadly, it will serve as a pilot for future electrification projects as part of the city's mission to be a carbon-neutral city by 2015. A recent similar program happened in the Bronx, which found that households that had replaced gas stoves with induction stoves showcased a 35% decrease in nitrogen dioxide and nearly a 43 difference in carbon monoxide, which is crazy. And so this docket is in front of this committee, and I ask that you support our efforts in trying to pass this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so there are lights on for green sheet polls, and I'm looking at Counselor Durkin, you don't have anything that you'd like to comment on this, right? And neither does Counselor Santana, but Counselor Worrell, you do. Counselor Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you to the Chair for pulling this out of the green sheets. This $1 million is going to come to Dorchester and some partners, stakeholders within the neighborhood that are great partners, Codman Square Neighborhood Development Corporation and the Boston Housing Authority that do great work. So I'm just excited about this million dollars in investments that's going to have a positive impact on all the residents inside of our public housing and kind of push Boston to be carbon-neutral by 2050. So thank you for pulling this and looking forward to getting these dollars and these investments into our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Worrell. Counselor Coletta Zapata seeks accept... Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your light. The Chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank Counselor Coletta for bringing this forward, Counselor Worrell as well. I think this will provide residents a healthier home. It's about environmental justice, and I want to say thank you to Counselor Coletta for her work on this issue. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. The Chair... Okay, no one else is looking to speak on this matter? Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, thank you, sorry. Counselor Coletta Zapata seeks acceptance of docket number... Mr. Clerk, can you remember?
1167.
Of docket number 1167. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
I'd like to pull docket 1287, which is on page 14.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please read it into the record.
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 1287, message in order for your approval in order to declare surplus, city-owned easement currently under the management of the Boston Transportation Department, and transfer the care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission. The land easement is located at 847, 849, and 851 Albany Street in Roxbury. Ward 8, parcel 0802014000, 0802016000, 802017000, and 080218000. This will transfer interest back to the Boston Water and Sewer Commission in accordance with a settlement agreement resolving an ongoing lawsuit against the city of Boston.
Thank you.
If my colleague objects, I can wait for Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson to be here. I have talked to her, and she is comfortable with me pulling this, and was comfortable with me pulling it last week.
Okay, thank you. Is there an objection? Counselor Flynn, do you have an objection to the poll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I listened to the clerk closely, but there was an ongoing legal matter, Mr. Clerk, at the Water and Sewer Commission I thought you referenced?
Yep. It says the, "This will transfer interest back to the Boston Water and Sewer Commission in accordance with a settlement agreement resolving an ongoing lawsuit against the city of Boston."
Mr. Clerk, I would like to get more information on that before I support it.
Counselor Flynn, are you...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Are you objecting?
Yes, because I'd like to get more information on the legal matter of Water and Sewer Commission.
Okay. We could do a roll call of the committee, if you'd like, Counselor Durkin, or we can hold it. Oh, the Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor. Oh, sorry, I turned on the right mic. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
I'll withdraw my pull of 1287.
Okay. Counselor Durkin is withdrawing that. The Chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, I would like to pull docket number 1476 for the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Docket number 1476 is on page 19 of the green sheets.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, docket number 1476, message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $62,149 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 port security grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency to be administered by the Fire Department. The grant will fund strengthened port-wide risk management and protection of critical surface transportation infrastructure from acts of terrorism, major disasters, and other emergencies.
Thank you. The Chair, absent objection, the docket is properly before the body. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice held a public hearing on all of the city of Boston grants administered by the Boston Fire Department on June 11, 2024. The committee heard testimony from three Boston Fire Department staff members, Kevin Coyne, Deputy Commissioner, Julie Devon, who's the procurement and grants manager, and Charlotte Lynch, who's the grants manager. We were also joined by Counselors Murphy, Flynn, Fitzgerald, Durkin, Weber, and Coletta Zapata. The committee also received a letter of absence from Counselor Papen. The committee heard testimony on each BFD grant, as well as comparisons of fundings to past years and departments' approach to grant applications. The committee also has also received detailed written information on this grant, which I have reviewed as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. This grant of $62,149 will fund command and control training on marine firefighting for land-based firefighters. This training is provided to chief officers, and funding specifically covers overtime expenses for 16 deputy chief officers and four additional district chief officers to attend 16 hours of training, instructor-to-travel accommodations for two external instructors delivering the training, and then thirdly, training fees, materials, and certifications for the 20 attendees. The grant funds 75% of the program with a 25% in-kind cost shared from city resources. This grant is one of four grant programs that the Department of Homeland Security and Federal Emergency Management Agency provide with focuses on strengthening critical transportation infrastructure against risk associated with potential terrorist attacks, major disasters, and other emergencies. The FY24 priorities are particularly focused on addressing sophisticated cybersecurity risk and the protection of crowded places. The training addresses a variety of critical challenges of poor incidents, including shipboard firefighting, managing the risk of batteries aboard ships, and coordinating between agencies, which can be especially challenging for longer-duration incidents. BFD has 35 land-based fire companies who have received increased trainings on port and shipboard responses due to the emerging threats such as active shooters and fire concerns associated with ship size and cargo carriers. The training also addresses the complex and unique Boston port operating environment and risk, including addressing the mix of commercial and pleasure craft, as well as the proximity to convention center and entertainment facilities, large residential buildings, and commercial and governmental agencies. As the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I recommend moving this docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and informal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that docket number 1476 ought to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice moves to passage of docket number 1476. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, this docket has passed. Thank you again to my colleagues for letting central staff know about your green sheet polls in advance of the meeting, it really helps the process. We are now moving on to late files. I've been informed by the clerk that there are four late file matters. We will take the late file matters individually. Two of them, one is an absence letter, one is a personnel order. So if we could do the absence letter and the personnel order together, we will take a vote to add these two matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding these two matters to the agenda, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.
First late file matter, a letter from Counselor Fernandez-Anderson. I regret to inform you that I will be unable to attend today's council meeting, and member of my staff will listen in and take notes accordingly. Sincerely, Counselor Tanya Fernandez-Anderson.
Mr. Clerk, please read the second late file matter into the record.
Second late file matter, Counselor Luizhen for Counsel Santana, personnel order.
Thank you. The Chair moves to passage of these two late file matters. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say nay. These matters have been... The absence letter is placed on file, and the personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the third late file matter into the record.
You'd want to add this?
Yeah, please read it, and then we'll take a vote on adding it.
Third late file matter from the Office of Mayor Wu. I hereby delegate to Dionne Irish, Chief of Operations for the city of Boston, the authority vested in me pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 87, Section 4. This delegation is effective as of the date of this letter, October 7, 2024, and shall remain in effect so long as Chief Irish remains in this position or until I file a new letter with your office. Sincerely, Mayor Wu.
Thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matter to the agenda. All those in favor of adding this late file matter, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. This late file matter has been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, you read it into the record. And this matter will be placed on file. Mr. Clerk, please read the fourth late file matter into the record.
Fourth late file matter, offered by Counselors Durkin and Brayden, order for summons. Whereas on October 8, 2024, the Committee on Pilot Agreements, Institutional, and Intergovernmental Relations held a public hearing on docket number 1425, order for a hearing to discuss inadequate delivery services by the United States Postal Service within Mission Hill and other Boston neighborhoods. And be it ordered pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 233, Section 8, the Boston City Council's Committee of the whole summons Joshua Balcunas, United States Postal Service, 25 Dorchester Ave Room 4005, Boston, Mass. 02205-9998, to appear before the Committee on Pilot Agreements, Institutional, and Intergovernmental Relations.
Okay, thank you. We will take a vote to add this late file matter to the agenda. All those in favor of adding this late file matter, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you. This late file matter has been added to the agenda. The Chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President Luizhen. Pursuant to Rule 46, I'd like to move to suspend Rule 49 and 33 to bring this matter before the body.
We will, absent... I want to make sure that I get this right. Absent objection, this matter is properly, as a late file matter, is properly before the body, and you can speak on this, and we'll take a vote once you are done speaking on this summons.
Thank you. Today, Counselor Brayden and I are filing summons for Mr. Joshua Balcunas, Boston Postmaster, to appear before the relevant committee of this body to testify before docket 1425. On October 8, during a hearing on the inadequate deliveries by the U.S. Postal Service in Mission Hill and other Boston neighborhoods, Mr. Balcunas and Mr. Dermot Tuohy, USPS Acting District Manager in Massachusetts and Rhode Island, were invited to testify but declined. As I stated yesterday during docket 1425's hearing, we and the residents of Boston understand that the USPS is a federal agency. However, as we have seen with our written communications, both formal and informal, USPS continues to fail to answer our concerns of the residents' mail and our elected federal, state, and municipal representatives. USPS cites performance information that encapsulates a region or district in their parlance, including two states, Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and that is the smallest geography that they're able to share public performance data for. We at the Boston City Council are concerned with the service quality in the city of Boston, and that our residents are receiving, and more accurately, not receiving, their mail. To this end, we seek to order the Boston Postmaster to appear in order to, one, obtain more accurate and relevant information regarding USPS performance in the city of Boston; two, what specific measures are being undertaken to address delivery delays and subpar service issues that Bostonians across our city are suffering from. The Boston Postmaster, as a senior USPS official responsible for overseeing the mail operations in Boston, must provide answers on service quality and plans for improvements that are related to this city, and not hide behind metrics encompassing multi-state region or boilerplate hand-waving by the USPS. Counselor Brayden and I are committed to ensuring that every neighborhood receives the reliable postal service they are entitled to under federal law, and I'm grateful to Counselors Santana and Weber for joining me in sponsoring the initial filing. Given the continued disregard from USPS, it is necessary that Mr. Balcunas explain these failures and propose immediate solutions. Therefore, I urge the council to move forward with this summons, ensuring accountability. We don't have a council meeting for two weeks, so that's why I'm doing this as a late file. They didn't appear yesterday, so in my eyes, this is really pressing, because we don't have a council meeting for two weeks, and the election is coming up. We definitely heard from union representatives not to worry about election mail, but in my opinion, the fact that one of my constituents, Mitch Hilton, didn't receive mail for 44 days this year, which was reported by The Globe yesterday, that is of utmost importance to the city of Boston, and that's of utmost concern to my constituents. So thank you, Counselor Brayden, for co-sponsoring this summons, and I hope to see the USPS representatives at the city council at a date to be determined.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin and... Counselors Durkin and... Oh, Counselor Brayden, would you like to speak on the matter? Are you sure? Because you are a question, so I do want to make sure. I apologize.
Yes, I just also want to stand and support my colleague, Counselor Durkin, for her leadership in bringing this matter before us for yesterday's hearing. As the Chair of the committee, we were very disappointed not to have a complete conversation... As the Chair of the committee, we were very disappointed not to have a complete conversation. It would be so, so much more effective if the representatives of management from the postal service had been available to answer our questions directly. So I do support this summons to ask the appropriate representatives to attend so that we can get to see, address the issue and hopefully find some ways to remedy the situation. It is totally unacceptable that, one instance that I had when we publicized this hearing, I was notified that the Executive Director of the Presentation School Foundation in Oak Square has six or seven nonprofit organizations in her building and they, and they get mail every seven to 10 days. So their mail isn't being delivered in a timely way. And we heard that over and over again yesterday in testimony from the public. So this is, this is not a trivial issue. This is a very serious issue. And I would, I would hope that the postal service would respond to our concerns in a timely way and actually turn up so that we could talk to them. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I ask a question to the sponsor?
You may, through the Chair, you may ask a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Did the, did the, did our Congress representatives or senators hold a hearing on this before the city council on this particular issue? And if so, what were the results of that hearing?
Counselor Durkin, if you'd like to respond, the Chair, you may. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin.
Thank you. Yesterday's hearing, I read a statement from Senator Markey and Congresswoman Ayanna Pressley appeared before the pilot committee. And I know there have been conversations at the federal level. But our job at the city council is to center the experience of residents of the city of Boston. I think Senator, both Senator Markey and Congresswoman Pressley have reached out to me directly to applaud our efforts to get answers for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Flynn, would you like to? Okay, Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think, they had, they held a hearing though before, before us. That's, that was the point I was, I was trying to get at. Also, Madam Chair, I wanted to see if this sets a precedent where we invite someone from the city to a meeting and they don't show up. If we invite the school superintendent to a meeting and she doesn't show up, someone in her place shows up or no one shows up, do then we take the initiative of doing a subpoena? Does it set a precedent that now we're able to use this power that we do have unilaterally and to ensure that if people don't show up, that are invited, that we use the subpoena to get them there? And, and if a member has, is filing a hearing order and the member wants a certain person to attend and testify but is not invited by the Chair of that committee, and then the member also takes the initiative to invite that person, maybe through the Chair or not through the Chair, but then does that also give the city council member the opportunity to subpoena a city, a city official in that regard? So I'm going to be voting no. I didn't want to object to it. I wanted, I wanted to have a vote and have a discussion. I don't believe in just not, not having a discussion on it. But I think there's some outstanding issues that we have to resolve before we do take a vote on it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And so I just want to be clear that there are two things happening. Are you voting no to, because in order for us to be able to vote on something that's introduced on the same day, it requires suspension of the rules. So are you object, are you objecting to the suspension of the rules? Or are you voting no on the matter?
I think it should go forward for a formal vote.
Okay, thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have, you have the floor.
Yeah, I guess, so I have, I have just a question for Counselor Durkin before I comment. And my understanding is that to, to issue the subpoena, this is a fairly rare occurrence where the council uses its authority to do this. We have to vote unanimously to issue the subpoena. It's not a majority vote?
No. I can explain.
Okay. Can you?
Yeah.
So it's majority?
So we have the power to summons pursuant to city council rules pursuant to Rule 49. It requires, usually the, it's introduced and then at the next city council meeting, the council president will call for a vote. In order to suspend that, how it's laid out in Rule 49, it requires, like, like everything, if you're going to introduce it on the same day, it requires a unanimous vote under Rule 33. And then in order to supersede what's stated in Rule 49 pursuant to Rule 46, it requires a two-thirds vote. So substantively, it requires a two-thirds vote. And in order for us, but first, in order for us to be able to vote, it requires unanimous consent. So we'll divide the question. And it seems as though Counsel Flynn is objecting to, has a no vote on the substantive matter that requires a two-thirds vote but not objecting to voting on the matter which requires unanimous consent of the body.
Okay, yes, Counsel Durkin, you, so it's just a two-thirds vote on, to issue the subpoena once we get, once it officially gets to us?
Yeah, to issue the summons pursuant to Rule 49.
Okay. Did, did you want, on that point, did you, I'm happy to see to Counsel Durkin if she had something to say on that.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
In order for it to be properly before the body, I asked to suspend Rule 49 and 33. So I think that's already been done.
Yes, in order for it to be properly before the body as a, as a late file matter. So we did that, but we still need to divide the question on voting on it of, on suspension and passage. I don't believe we, on suspension of the rules.
Okay, I, I moved when I moved to temporarily suspend Rule 49 and 33 to bring it before the body. Oh, so, so you're saying that there needs to be?
Yeah, I mean, so we will ask if everyone is, if all in favor and people say aye. If there's an objection, then we'll have to do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Yep. The Chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor. Oh, oh, sorry. I'm, I'll kick it back to Counselor Weber. Just, Counsel Weber, if you have a response to the Chair, you may do so now.
Yeah, I, I, thank you, Counselor Mejia. Just, I wanted to make a point. I had a question about that. Thank you for clarifying. I, I just want to thank Counselor Durkin for her leadership on this. I believe that, you know, people in Boston have not been receiving their mail. We asked the responsive, the people responsible for delivery of the mail to show up and testify. And I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Counsel Durkin, but the response was basically a dare. We won't show up without a subpoena. So here we are, we're going to issue a subpoena. I, I, I just, I don't want to muddy the waters with other hearings and if the school superintendent doesn't show up, just because here we ask, we can't get any representative from the government to show up without a subpoena. Whereas in, you know, other, we have BPS in here, we might not get the superintendent. We, we, often we'll get someone else in BPS or someone else who can answer our questions. Right now, we've been told we won't get any answers to our questions without a subpoena. So here, you know, I support that. And, you know, I think I will, if, if other events come up and we have a discussion, we'll address those facts as presented to us. But I think right now we have a pretty clear question of people don't get their mail. This is a public service. If people weren't getting their water or electricity in Boston, we want answers on why not. And here, we've been told that the only way we're going to get answers is to use this power to issue a subpoena and I support that. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair, unless there's a response, I would like to go to Counselor Mejia first. Counselor Mejia, you have the floor.
I'll be quick. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to make sure that, so, want to note for the record that I'm in full support of summons and utilizing every single tool that we have in our toolkit to get people to show up and speak up around the issues that are impacting our constituents. So just want to go on the record that whatever, whatever it takes to get them here, I'm all for it. So just want to rise and, and say that. And I also think a lot of these things that I've been observing, because I've been in observation mode lately, is that I, I think that whatever decisions we make here, we just need to be consistent in terms of how we move. So if we're doing this and we're going through it, I just feel like the best way, I guess, for me to show up is to have a very clear, direct standard that we're all going to abide by regardless of what the situation is. I think where it gets a little weird oftentimes is that we've stopped some things from coming on, we've supported other things and it just feels inconsistent. And I feel like that gets a little bit confusing for a lot of people, particularly those people who aren't political hacks and all in the mix of the everyday workings of government. And I include myself in that and I am okay with saying that. I am still learning and I'm proud of that. Because of that, I want to make sure that I will continue to rise and just ask for consistency and a standard so that I know what the rules are of engagement are for my individual colleagues and their offices and their standards and what we're going to do. Because if we don't have a sense of standard, people are going to always switch up. And I think, I think that is dangerous. And I've seen that here, sometimes to my benefit and sometimes to my detriment. Like, so I've been on both receiving ends of this situation. And so I want to make sure that I get it right and that I'm showing up in ways that, you know, are reflective of what the norms are in this chamber. And so that's all I'm asking for. I don't know who has the power, if this is something that we need to do collectively as a body, but I, I am going to ask for some consistency and some clarity around our decision-making model.
Thank you. I'll just state that it requires, everything just requires votes. And so Rule 49 to suspend Rule 49 requires two-thirds of a vote of the council. To introduce something on the same day and have it be voted on the same day requires unanimous consent. And that's, that's, that's the rules, that's the power of Rule 49, Rule 46. I had to make sure that I read up on it, but the rules are what the rules are to be used and then to be voted on by the body. The Chair recognizes, Counselor Mejia, you may.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that what I'm saying is being heard. I'm not questioning the rules in terms of like the numbers and what it falls. I'm talking about our process as a body in terms of objections or things that happen. So I want to be clear that I know what I'm asking for and it has nothing to do with reading the rulebook. I could read that and I could understand it and I can abide by it. What I'm talking about is the norms in terms of our decision-making process here as a body. It might just be to the discretion of each individual. Maybe that's just, that might be as simple as that.
I can't control whether someone's objecting. You can control whether someone's objecting.
And I hear that, but I do think that at some point it would be helpful to understand protocols, policies and procedures and standards so that we can be more supportive of each other when things like this pop up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Durkin, I'd like to call on my other colleagues first unless you have a direct reply.
I just have.
Let me call on Counsel Flynn, then I'll call on, then I'll call on you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, if this is approved, is it legal for this body to subpoena a federal official to appear before the city council to testify? And under what, under what document does it say it is legal for us to do that?
Thank you, Counsel Flynn. That is pursuant to the rules, we have the power as a body to summons folks, to summons people before this body. How they respond to that summons, whether they appear, it is a rule that has been invoked by prior councils. They have summoned people. It's not a novel thing that council, maybe for this iteration of the council, but it is not a novel rule.
Madam Chair, I was specifically asking for a federal official. Is the city council able to subpoena a federal official into this body to offer a testimony on a particular matter?
The council can seek to issue a summons to whoever it wants to call before the body. How that individual responds to that summons is a separate question. That I do not, I'm not that person and therefore I can't say how they will or will not respond. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. You have the floor.
And thank you so much, Madam President. Counselor Flynn, I really wanted to, I really wanted to share, when we were at the hearing yesterday, one of the core topics that came up is post office closures. And I called this hearing initially because my constituents weren't receiving their mail in Mission Hill. But what came up at this hearing was that potentially the South Boston post office is potentially on the chopping block. They're always dealing with lease issues. You can watch, you can watch the hearing. For me, this is so personal. It came up that my colleague from Counselor, Counselor Coletta Zapata from District 1, it came up that there were issues because in Chelsea, her, both of, two of her communities are served by the Chelsea Post Office. There were so many questions that came up, speaking with these union officials, that I, I really want to like urge all of my colleagues, including my colleague from South Boston, to really see this as an opportunity to hear directly from the USPS about the issues that are emerging. And I, and I know that, I know that you've said that you aren't going to support this today. You'll support it going through, but not, but not support it. But I think it would be very meaningful for us to have a unanimous vote. So respectfully, I just want to ask for your support on this. There are issues that came up in your particular district that I think that you would really benefit as well from being at this hearing and having a representative appear. I didn't want any federal issue to become my issue. It just landed in my email inbox. It landed at my desk. People were calling me. And I think as a counselor, I have to respond to those concerns. And so I know we can get in back and forth about so many things, but I would just really appreciate the support of my colleagues 100% on this issue. We need to hear from USPS. Thank you.
Thank you. I will allow Counsel Flynn to respond and then I'll move on to Counsel Brayden. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, I know this issue as well as any city council. I spend a lot of time at the Veterans Administration in Jamaica Plain in West Roxbury. I know well that medicine is mailed almost to over half of veterans that seek medication from the VA Medical Center. I know the incredible role the post office plays in providing meal and packages and medicine to disabled veterans. That's not my point. My point is, are we setting a precedent for us to subpoena city officials now? And I agree with Counsel Mejia. I think if we do it for one, we should, we should do it for all. And if we do it for all, if we all agree on it, I'll, I'll agree on it too. But, but then we can't go back and say, no, I don't want to, I don't want to block this one or I don't want to subpoena a city official. We just want to subpoena federal officials, the state officials. But that's the inconsistency that I do want clarity on. I'm willing to support this as long as we all agree that going forward, we have, will all support subpoenaing city officials if it's appropriate. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. A few things. I just want to be clear that this is a summons. I also want to be clear that we're not setting precedent because prior iterations of this body have issued a summons, former city councillor Zachem, just in recent memory. And then third is that I, I just want to make it clear that like every, every councillor can make a decision on how they vote. And I think I, I, I do find it a bit odd to request that we always, that, that people agree in the future to support something that is not currently before the body. What we have before the body is what we have before the body to vote on a summons. And in future, if, if the matter comes before the council on a different summons, this body individually, collectively, how we do everything, can decide how they're going to vote and how they'll, how they want to address the matter. Counselor Brayden, did you want to speak on this matter? And then we'll, then we'll move to.
Very briefly, I, I, you know, I think issuing a summons is just a request for someone in a, in a decision-making role at the USPS to come and answer our questions. We, we got some insight into some of their thinking because there was, I don't know how we managed to do this, but we got an email chain within, from within their post. And they, they said. And they said that this council has a political agenda and is not, and this is not, and not so much about customers. This is absolutely about our customers. We wouldn't be having this conversation if it wasn't for our constituents across the city of Boston, but in some particular areas like Roxbury that are, and Charlestown that are very, very profoundly impacted by this. And we'd like to get the bottom of it. So, a little respect from the USPS would be very much welcomed. And in the, in the event that they decline to actually come and appear before us, I would expect that we would get our answers in writing and some serious conversation. We can elevate this further up the, up the chain and ask our colleagues at the, in Congress to take this up and pursue it further. But we are hearing firsthand from our constituents that there's a problem, and we're trying to address this as their representatives. So, it's disrespectful to us as a council, but it's also, this is, you know, we're just doing our jobs here and trying to get the answers that our constituents are asking for. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Braden. I just want to reiterate and echo, right? It's pursuant to Rule 49, and in the Charter, I believe 17I, we have the authority to issue a summons. Now, it's on their burden whether they want to provide reasons for why they don't feel like they will or will not respond, but we have this ability pursuant to our council rules and even more so pursuant to the Charter. And so, in order to make sure that it's clear, I'm going to divide the question. And I'm going to first, to ask that we take a vote on suspending the rule so that we can take a vote on this matter today because it was introduced today. So, all in favor of suspending the rules, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. This matter can be voted on today. We do also have to take another vote, and that's a vote that requires two-thirds. It's to suspend Rule 46 because pursuant to Rule 49, it's usually the council president who asks for a vote during the next council meeting, but we can suspend that pursuant to Rule 48. Okay, we don't need to, okay. Since we just got the unanimous vote on that, we don't need to take this vote on Rule 46 that will require two-thirds vote because of that unanimous vote. So, now we'll take a vote on actually issuing this, issuing the order to summons, and that requires just a simple majority. So, all in favor of Counsel Durkin, Counsel Durkin and Counsel Braden, who we've voted to suspend the rules, now we're seeking to pass this order for summons. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Clerk, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Roll call vote on issuing, issuance of summons. Counsel Braden.
Yes.
Counsel Braden, yes. Counsel Coletta Zapata.
Yes.
Counsel Coletta Zapata, yes. Counsel Durkin.
Yes.
Counsel Durkin, yes. Counsel Fitzgerald.
Yes.
Counsel Fitzgerald, yes. Counsel Flynn.
No.
Counsel Flynn, no. Counsel Louie Jean.
Yes.
Counsel Louie Jean, yes. Counsel Mejia.
Yes.
Counsel Mejia, yes. Counsel Murphy.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin.
Yes.
Counsel Peppin, yes. Counsel Santana.
Yes.
Counsel Santana, yes. Counsel Weber.
Yes.
Counsel Weber, yes. And Counsel Worell.
Yes.
Counsel Worell, yes. The summons, order for a summons has received 11 votes in the affirmative and one vote in the negative.
Thank you. This order has passed. Okay. We are now on to personnel orders. To the consent agenda, but just wanted to, oh, right, okay. If anybody wanted to add their names to any thing while they were out of chambers, you may do so now. Counsel Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Clerk, can I just be, I'm looking at 1511, and I just want to add my name, and I also want the record to reflect that I will be voting in support of that. Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to add their name to anything or add to a vote? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Can I please add my name to 1513?
Would anyone else like to add their name to, or vote on a docket while they were absent from chambers? Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are no additions to the consent agenda. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events. We have some birthdays to celebrate. In Counsel Braden's office, we have Debbie Glennon. And in Counsel Worell's office, we have Abdullah Beckett. So, happy birthday to these October birthdays. If anyone has any announcements, no? Okay. Oh, the Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Just want to announce on October 12th, Saturday, at the South Street Courts, the South Street Youth Center is holding a basketball tournament. Everyone's welcome to participate and take on the District 6 City Councilor in a game of basketball. There's also on Saturday, 3:30 in Mozart Park, there is bachata concert. You know, there's bachata, traditional Dominican music, dance, and demonstrations by an all-youth ensemble. Yep, do you have anything to add to that? No?
I don't have the message. It's bachata.
Okay. Well, I stand corrected.
The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta Zapata. You have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. And I apologize to transition to a more dark topic, but this was a devastating week for women across the country in regards to reproductive rights and freedoms. In Georgia, I'm sure people saw, they instituted a six-week abortion ban. That brings us back to the 1950s. And in Texas, on Monday, October 7th, the United States Supreme Court upheld a Texas Supreme Court ruling with a case that involves two doctors and 20 women who were denied medically life-saving care during pregnancy complications. This specific care is standard for medical treatment for serious complications as a way to prevent sepsis, organ failure, and other major problems, and in some cases, death of the pregnant patient. The recent decision of the nation's highest court sets an extremely dangerous precedent in a post-Roe America where women suffer significant physical short-term and in some cases, lifelong impairment, or worse, their lives are threatened due to a denial of care. The named plaintiff, Amanda Zarowski, was 18 weeks pregnant when she learned she had a preterm, prelabor rupture of membranes. Despite the condition posing a threat to her life, doctors refused to provide necessary care. Amanda was admitted to the ICU for three days due to sepsis. She survived. However, the infection has made it difficult now for her and her husband to conceive again. And so, I was going to file a late-term resolution, standing with the women of Texas and Georgia. I'm going to wait for next two weeks from now's hearing to stand with those women and persons who can become pregnant, just seeing that I think it's important for all of us to stand up in this moment and fight for our reproductive freedom and rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Counsel Coletta Zapata. Anyone else? Just wanted to announce, Reverend Monroe talked about it this morning, but this Friday is National Coming Out Day, so lots of love to our queer community here. The City Council is closed on Monday in recognition of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And as such, there's also no council meeting next Wednesday. But we will be having our Latinx and Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. So, looking forward to celebrating our pillars of the community. Juan was in here earlier. We all know Juan, a former, forever central staff staffer here in the city of Boston. Thank you to him for helping us plan. Thank you to, again, my colleagues. Looking forward to that event next Wednesday at noon in chambers. All are welcome and all are invited. And maybe we'll see Counsel Weber, how do you pronounce it? Doing the?
Bachata.
Doing the bach, doing some bachata. We are now moving on, oh, Counsel Durkin has one announcement. Counsel Durkin?
Thank you so much, Council President. Just wanted to say congratulations to Dr. Beth Ross of Emmanuel College. Her investiture is on Friday. She was interim president of Emmanuel College and now is moving firmly into the president's role. I've gotten a chance to meet with her. She's incredible, and they really are a leader in the city and in the colleges of the Fenway, and so excited to be there. So, hope some of my colleagues can join for her investiture on Friday.
Thank you. We are now moving on to memorials. If anyone would like to speak on behalf of anyone who has passed, now is the moment to do so. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. Counsel Braden, you have the floor.
Yes, I ask that we stand in memory of Robert Bob O'Connell, a very close neighbor of ours on the adjoining street, beloved husband of Marnie O'Connell and a devoted family, large family who, in the Oak Square neighborhood of Brighton. He will be greatly missed, and we send our condolences to his family.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Braden. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Counsel Fernando Anderson, Maceo Martin. On behalf of Counsel Braden, Robert Bob O'Connell. On behalf of myself and the entire Boston City Council, Red Sox legend Luis Tiant. A moment of silence. The Chair moves that when the council adjourned today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, October 23rd at noon. Again, there's no meeting next week. Thank you to my colleagues, to central staff, to the clerk in the clerk's office, and to Amy for filling in for our lovely sonographer, Ellen. Thank you, Amy, for being with us here today. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Hi, Michael. We see you there. The council is adjourned.[1745.15]